Rename Liz Sullivan.
Thank you. All set.
Great. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge Allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lopera?
Present.
Ms. Mercer? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil? I believe he'll be joining us shortly. And Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom.
Hello.
It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the July 13th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe, at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, school committee members, distinguished guests. My name is Juan Bernalli. I'm one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters, whom along with interpreter Mr. Randall Dominguez will provide simultaneous interpretation tonight. Spanish-speaking interpreter Gabriela Herrera will provide consecutive interpretation for school committee member, Spanish-speaking Ms. Rafaela Polanco Garcia. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Para poder accesar la interpretación simultánea en español, busquen el globo redondo que aparece en la parte inferior de sus pantallas. Es como un globo terráqueo. Hagan un clic sobre el globo y seleccione en español como su idioma de preferencia. De igual manera, si se están conectando de un iPhone, de un iPad, o de una tableta, localicen los tres puntos en la parte superior de la pantalla, seleccionen donde dice "Language Interpretation", "Interpretación del lenguaje", y seleccione en español como su idioma de preferencia. Bienvenidos nuevamente. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Haitian Creole interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Joe Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. En nuestro programa, hemos tenido un programa con Nadez que nos ha presentado un programa para que hablara creole. Si ustedes necesitan nuestro sistema, haga clic aquí abajo, en el globo blanco, y haga clic. Y ustedes tienen que hacerlo sin tener que huir. Les deseo mucha suerte. Gracias. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Cabo Verdeano interpreter please introduce yourself and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiane, and along with Armando, who will be your Cape Verdean interpreters for tonight. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Josiane, y juntamente con Armando, nos sabemos ser nuestros interpretes de país natal. Si ustedes tienen acceso a interpretación simultánea, luego que esté disponible, ustedes clicen en la icona del globo en la parte inferior de sus ecrans y seleccionan la lengua Cabo Verdeano. Gracias y buenas tardes. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna. Mabel and I will be your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. 因为见到地球仪的时候呢，我们可以选Cantonese， 我们就得到广东话的即传翻译频道的了。谢谢大家，应该可以。Thank you. Back to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Tina, and my partner, Wei, will will to provide the Mandarin interpretation tonight. 好，祝您今天晚上聚，这过得愉快。好。Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting today. Good job,各位。我姓V。我是今天的主持人。请各位查看表和找到关键词。
Thank you. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Carrie McSwain, Michael Hirschberg, and Katie McFarland. Thank you all for assisting us this evening, and thank you to all the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We'll now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for the public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you signed up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. I want to give a warm welcome to Dr. Drew Eggleston, who is presiding over his first meeting as Acting Superintendent of Boston Public Schools. Dr. Eggleston will be providing valuable continuity and leadership during this interim period, while incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper transitions from Somerville to Boston. Thank you, Dr. Eggleston. So, the school committee has scheduled an executive session on Friday, July 15th, in the morning for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the incoming superintendent. We've also scheduled several public meetings in August, and at some point in the coming weeks, in one of those upcoming school committee meetings, the school committee will publicly vote on the contract for the incoming superintendent as well as the acting superintendent, as those two roles are inextricably linked. So just wanted to let people know that. So, we will now, oh, so I have one other thing I want to share with you. Before we begin tonight, I want to share an exciting announcement about our departing student representative, Syra Mercer. Syra has been accepted into the United Way's Marion Elherd Scholarship Program and will receive financial support of $10,000 over four years of college. In addition, the scholarship recipients get their own e-coach, a United Way volunteer who provides advice and support throughout their collegiate journey. It even gets better than that. The United Way of Mavs Bay and Merrimack Valley has committed to providing future student representatives to the Boston School Committee with the Herd Scholarship as long as they qualify. The school, the committee has been fortunate to have so remarkable student representatives over the years, and for a long time, we have been looking for ways to acknowledge their valuable contributions to the district. We want to thank the United Way for the generous support of Boston's young people, and we want to give special thanks to former School Committee Chair Alex Oliver Davila, who laid the foundation for this special partnership, and I am thrilled that Syra and future student representatives will have this incredible opportunity. I know we've all been concerned that the student is not able to receive the stipend that the rest of us are able to access, and so we really feel this is a completely wonderful and appropriate way to acknowledge that with the scholarship and the support. So, again, thank you, United Way, and thank you, Alex, also for your help in getting this to happen. We will now move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th, 2022, June 21st, 2022, and June 29th, 2022, school committee meetings as presented. Is there a second?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Joe O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the Acting Superintendent's report. I present to you our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Drew Eggleston.
I wanted to begin by saying congratulations to Ms. Mercer. We will have to have an opportunity to host her back here when she starts her freshman year to congratulate her publicly for this really prestigious honor. I wanted to thank Madam Chair for the warm introduction this evening. It's an honor to be here tonight. I also want to thank members of the public who have joined us. I wanted to begin my comments by sending a word, a special word of thank you to Chairperson Robinson for last week visiting the central office with me. We had a chance to move through several central office floors, specifically to thank individuals for their work, hear more about their individual and collective priorities, hear from them about some concerns that they might have, as well as any ideas that they have for improvement. During our walkthrough, we had a chance to observe so many important things, such as meetings between the Department of Transportation and our vendor for transportation, TransDev. We observed visits with families in the enrollment and newcomer center and had opportunities to welcome new families to BPS. We observed human capital staff leading a call center for new and current employees as they have questions. We observed a special space in Boling called the Bullpen in the Office of Instructional and Informational Technology, which is adjacent to the district server. And we had opportunities to hear about summer STEM programming, as well as plans from the early childhood team, both for the summer and the fall. All in all, it was just a really extraordinary day. I want to specifically shout out and thank the central office team. It was a moment of great privilege for me personally, and I think also for the chair, to see so many of our leaders beaming with pride as they showcased and discussed their work. During our visit, we could see that all of these leaders were focused on solving critical issues, digging into their core work, and providing customer service at the center of every interaction that we observed. I want to thank members of the central office team for their continued service and dedication to the children and families in the city of Boston. Chair Robinson and I will be scheduling additional sessions in the days to come, and are committed to staying engaged with our system and school leaders throughout the summer. I wanted to now transition to a conversation and a part of my report on our DESI update, specifically relative to the systemic improvement plan. Since our last school committee meeting, the district has actively started work in response to the systemic improvement plan. I want to be clear that while the DESI systemic improvement plan is meant in part to ensure that BPS follows through on important commitments, the spirit of this document is more importantly to accelerate the type of systemic reform that is deeply needed across our organization. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Monica Hogan as the Assistant Superintendent of Data Strategy and Implementation to spearhead the agreement outlined between the city of Boston, the department, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and BPS. In her role, Monica will be responsible for overseeing the implementation and monitoring of the district's systemic improvement plan with DESI, as well as the planning, coordination, execution of the district's data strategy with an emphasis on improved decision-making and accountability to advance the mission of BPS. I'm also pleased to announce that April Clarkson has agreed to serve as the interim Senior Executive Director of Data and Accountability. We know that there are a number of upcoming deadlines on August 15th, and we are hard at work to ensure that we fully meet them. I've outlined those commitments that are due by August 15th on this slide, and I stand ready to share this evening that I'm completely confident that we will fully meet the deadlines outlined for August. To support us in this work, we have created internal cross-functional working groups to ensure that we are making progress in each of the seven focus areas outlined in the systemic improvement plan. I want to update the community on our progress and readiness in each of these areas. In student safety, we have initiated the procurement process for the required audit. We are in the midst of launching a new BPS helpline for parents and families to call with questions and to report issues. Each issue will be, will have a ticket created in our ticketing system, allowing us to track and monitor follow-up. We are also posting three positions this week, a commitment that is due by early September, to monitor and respond to complaints that come in through DESI's Problem Resolution System, or PRS. Related to special education, our legal team is currently in the final stages of reviewing an updated policy and procedure manual, and we are planning for PD sessions in August for school staff. The procurement process has also been initiated for a review team of special education. In transportation, we've started the procurement process for the diagnostic evaluation required by August 15th. I will share later in this report more detail on improvements we are making in transportation to ensure that we are ready for day one of school. The facilities team is on track to complete the review of bathroom facilities and have a plan for needed renovations. For multilingual learners, we are fully on track to complete the strategic plan by August 15th. We know we have, we've had challenges with tracking access to English language services in English language services as part of reporting requirements to the Department of Justice, and are working to make sure we make the needed improvements to meet this milestone. This is especially true in October, which is the deadline for our first report to the Department of Justice. Want to quickly move to the next slide, which looks at our report, our reporting to the Department of Justice for the 2021-2022 school year. This data illustrates BPS's reporting higher levels of compliance in March than in September and October. While it is true that we need to fully demonstrate 100% compliance for our multilingual learners, whether they're without disabilities, and for our students with disabilities, we also need to address urgently the systemic barriers that impact our October reporting data. We've committed to a number of investments and initiatives that we believe will support our improvement for the Fall 2022 Department of Justice Report. Specifically, we've increased capacity and support in what is now referred to as the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, formerly OEL, in the area of compliance. I'll also point out that we've made significant more investments in the teaching and learning space within this department to support our transition toward more native language instruction across BPS. We've created, under, with the support of incoming Superintendent Skipper, a regional support model which will embed OME and Office of Special Education Support, among other resources, directly into the regional structure led by school superintendents. Professional learning for school leaders at August Leadership Institute will clarify and report on and share information relative to Department of Justice regulations. We are also assigning Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education staff directly to schools throughout late August and early September to support and advise school leaders and their teams on how best to deploy resources and to support data entry. I will be providing a more detailed update at a school, at a special school committee meeting in August in advance of the August 15 deadline. We will also provide periodic updates on our website, including all memos and artifacts that we ultimately will submit to DESI as part of this process. Next, I want to provide a BPS summer learning update. The BPS summer learning portfolio consists of an array of high-quality academic and enrichment opportunities for students in every grade level across the district. This summer, we've offered 111 programs, which is a 20% increase in seats and offerings over summer of 2021. We've had more than 14,000 students enroll in our different summer programs, more than 6,700 students enrolled in fifth-quarter summer learning programs, more than 3,400 students enrolled in high school credit recovery, 2,700 students in extended school year, and 1,250 students enrolled in unique multilingual learner programs, although more than 4,100 English learners students are enrolled in across all programs. Fifth-quarter summer learning and high school credit recovery programs started last Tuesday, and ESY programs or extended school year programs began this week. We've heard overwhelmingly positive feedback from the week. Our extended learning teams have visited the Mildred Ave, Lee K8, Margarita Muniz, Orchard Gardens, Blackstone, The King, and Hennington sites, and will be visiting additional sites next week and throughout the summer. The team observed site coordinators creating a new student sign-in process by using QR codes and parents' phone numbers to streamline check-in and get students where they needed to be faster. We observed field trips with students and families already in action, with class trips to Easty Farms in East Boston, and a family outing with courageous sailing, where one mom sharing about the sailing experience in Spanish. We, along with Amanda, are super happy with the program and have had so much fun. Thank you so much. Just today, kindergarten classrooms received live caterpillars to learn about the life cycle of butterflies, and stay tuned for their release date in the coming weeks. Given the first week of programming, continue to see a lot of movement with families still enrolling and students moving off of waitlists for programs, and a recent decision to keep registration open for another week, attendance data will be looked at in earnest next week. Anecdotally, we are feeling very good about attendance with the programs we visited, having attendance rates at over 80% of the invited students. There continues to be a hiring challenge on two fronts that we are head-on addressing. One, we are still hiring substitute nurses for eight schools, and the interim coordinators of the summer programs have been trained on first aid. They know where to access PPE and COVID testing, and who to call to escalate a health concern. For educator shortages, we're working with Boston After School and Beyond to have coverage for educators who might be sick and to assure that we have necessary building-based substitutes for each of the sites. Next, I want to provide an update on transportation readiness as it pertains to summer school and the start of school. For summer, our hub stop transportation has gone relatively smoothly. Programs are emphasizing the importance of arriving on time to assigned hub stop locations to increase the student population accessing the buses. Additionally, all students have been routed for ESY. There are 260 routed buses, running 880 individual students, and all scheduled routes have been assigned drivers. Calls have gone out to all drivers and monitors to remind them of the importance of showing up on time for their assigned routes. TransDev and BPS district staff will be deployed to schools to support efficient bus unloading and loading at program sites. The transportation hotline is fully staffed with 24 customer service representatives and three operations staff members, and families who are part of the extended school year program can track their assigned bus via WhereIsMySchoolBus app. We are also deeply engaged in our planning for the first day of school in September as well. As opposed to last school year, we entered the summer with a ratified contract between TransDev and our bus driver union. This contract includes a significant number of operational improvements that better prepares TransDev to respond to the very real transportation concerns to which BPS must urgently and immediately respond. Our routing team in the Department of Transportation is focused on route consolidation. They are revising the amount of bus routes they had from last year and are looking for ways to cut down the number of buses across the operation. We have also implemented working groups with OITT, TransDev, Special Education, and Welcome Services. These working groups help to improve the quality of students' assignment data to facilitate more efficient routing, and we have added an additional data position to support this critical cross-function work. To support with driver recruitment, a real challenge from last school year, a $4,000 sign-on bonus is given to anyone who is hired with full credentials, and we are also giving $1,000 to employees who refer candidates who successfully take positions with TransDev. We have also built our own driver pipeline. TransDev is now offering a CDL training program for candidates who are interested in becoming bus drivers. 23 bus monitors are currently going through the program, which could lead to an additional 23 bus drivers for our system. We have ramped up bus monitor recruitment efforts as well. We increased the number of job postings by collaborating with the Office of Human Capital and sharing on social networks to ensure an effective and streamlined hiring process. I wanted to close this update with an, with this report rather, with an update on hiring for the upcoming school year, most, especially for school leaders, teachers, and paraprofessionals. For school leaders, we have completed 17 hires and an additional pending hire for Charleston High School. There are no current unfilled school leader positions at this time once we make the announcement of a school leader for Charleston High School. For teachers, we currently have about 250 educator vacancies across the system. We have completed 742 hires, and there are an additional 254 hires that are currently going through the hiring process. While the number of vacancies is higher at this point than last year, we have many more new positions this year than we did last year, given our FY '23 investments. I also want to note that many of our paras are being hired into teaching positions. This is really positive in terms of growth and development for our educators. It does mean that we have more vacancies, which we anticipate getting filled later in the summer. As school leaders prioritize finalizing teacher hiring before they focus on paraprofessional hiring. We have an all-hands-on-deck approach to and process to onboarding hires this summer. We are also working with our new licensure specialists to ensure people have what they need to be licensed for their positions. I'm continuing to monitor the staffing and transportation data, and will ensure support for central office and school leaders. I'm confident in our readiness for day one at this specific moment in time and look forward to formal presentations to the school committee as we get closer to the start of school. and look forward to formal presentations to the school committee as we get closer to the start of school. I'll turn this over to Chair Robinson.
Thank you, Dr. Edgelson, for that report. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee, and I want to remind our colleagues about agreed-upon norm. You each have five minutes, one to two questions, and also to remind BPS staff to also be brief with your response. If you have additional questions, I'll come back around for a second. Dr. Alkins.
Thank you, Dr. Edgelson, for the update. It's good to see the progress already, but also the emphasis on the metrics that we'll be looking at, particularly over the next year, especially more in-depth. I actually have a question in regard to what what protocols are going to be that you all are thinking about putting in place for sort of the recruitment and the certification for to develop a stronger pipeline for for English learner teachers and particularly with the intersection of English learners with disabilities. So what are you doing there?
Yeah, a few things. Thank you first for the question. There are a number of local colleges and universities that have started programs recently for dual-language educators that are focusing on dual-language programs and what it means to be a teacher in dual-language programs, as well as new programs to support an increase across the Commonwealth of ESL teachers. So we've been working with a few key universities in the metro Boston area to support that, and members of our own team were out at those universities talking to potential candidates who are in master's programs or graduate programs to support their potential interests in BPS. We've also been working with our paraprofessionals, specifically our paraprofessionals who are in specific language-targeted SEI classrooms to ensure that they have a pathway toward teacher licensure, and that program has been remarkably successful and has led to many hires within BPS. We find that some of our educators who come directly from BPS or are part of a program such as BPE's program, with the Boston Teacher Residency Program, have a deep understanding of the Boston context and are best prepared for Boston classrooms, and that has been a signature part of the district's strategy in this area.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, do you know if programs sort of like the Boston Teachers Residency in partnership with BPS are looking to sort of expand those programs out to our other partnering institutions or to other universities? It would just seem that that would be a if it's a successful model, would be great to see it at other four-year institutions or two-year institutions, for that matter.
It's a great question. I don't know the answer to it, but I'd be happy to follow up with folks internally, as well as some of our partners around that potential strategy.
Ms. Lapiera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Edgelson, for the information. Apologies if I missed this, but I know that when you were going over the MOU kind of updates specific to the August 15 deadlines, from the chart that was on the slide, it looked like most pieces were on track, but there was one item that was categorized as possible concern related to English language learners, and so again, apologies if I missed it, but can you just give a little bit more information on what the concerns are and then what we're doing in addressing those concerns?
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't super explicit on that part of the presentation, which I now realize. So the issue that I see, and the reason I marked that yellow as having some risk for us, is that the October report to the Department of Justice has always been a weak spot for BPS. There's a whole host of reasons for that. One, the data has to be firm and final by mid-September in order for us to get the report to the Department of Justice by October 1. At that point, we've only been into school for two weeks, and there's, I think, been a lack of proactive support to our schools, our school leaders, and our language acquisition educators who are leading this work at a specific school before school starts. And so there are a number of resources and changes that we're making to, I think, be better positioned than we have in the past relative to the October 1 Department of Justice report. Specifically, we've hired new leaders within that office, both to focus on compliance and to support some of our teaching and learning transitions that we need to make relative to native language instruction. Those new hires are going to be embedded within the regional structure of the way that our schools are organized, or schools are organized in regions generally by neighborhood, and there will be a specific member of the team who's working directly with a school superintendent, monitoring the data, making school visits, working with our school leaders, with the school superintendent to ensure both support and accountability relative to this. Our team in the Office of Multilingual Learners and Multicultural Education will ensure that they are presenting to all of our school leaders at the August Institutes to ensure that the Department of Justice guidance is very clear, as well as to provide support to our school leaders and their teams on data reporting. And I've asked the office to ensure that all of our, the entire office, is deployed out into schools, working directly with school leaders those first days of schools to think about how staff is being deployed, whether or not that staff is deployed in ways that's consistent with what our Department of Justice agreement asks us to do, as well as to provide the technical assistance that our school leaders have demonstrated that they needed some support on relative to the September reporting due dates.
So that's helpful, and you did go over some of those pieces. I think the part that I'm still getting stuck on is we're talking about the work with the Department of Justice, and there is a report that's due in October, but then we're also naming an August 15 deadline, and so how do those two interact with each other?
Yeah, it's a great question. Let me do my best to try to respond to that. My understanding of the systemic improvement plan is that by August 15, we have to be able to communicate to DESI what steps we've taken to improve our reporting to the Department of Justice. That first report is due in August, oh, sorry, that first report to the Department of Justice is due on October 1, but by August 15, we have to have made some systemic improvements relative to that. So some of those things that I shared are our best attempt at this specific moment in time to make those types of systemic improvements that are critical for our multilingual learners. And until I start to see data and have better sense of sort of our enrollment patterns, where our staffing is needed, I'm not confident marking that green until we get closer to the start of the school year. I'm not overly concerned. I'm very committed to ensuring that our numbers for October 1 look substantially better than they have in the past.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, Dr. Edgelson, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve as interim director. Appreciate you stepping up for the city and for the district at this time, and I know you were really the lead in working out the MOU with DESI, so your knowledge on that is invaluable, and I appreciate your willingness to entertain any question on it and even your caution about it. So I want to step back for a second, Dr. Edgelson, and just kind of get your thoughts on the overall agreement, because I see this two pieces. First, we have some immediate thresholds of August 15, which is more kind of showing DESI that we've started a lot, started work in a lot of areas, got a group for this, got a group for that, started on transportation, et cetera, started on special ed, you know, the policy manuals, et cetera, and you talked in detail on each of the steps. Then we move into more really seeing systemic changes in the district and starting to see improvements. So I'm interested in your thoughts first on that immediate threshold of August 15, which the public is rightfully focused on, and then also your thoughts about the stage to help set the stage for us. As someone who was so intimately involved in crafting this agreement with DESI on behalf of the district, just talk to us for a minute, please, about your overall thoughts on the agreement and what we, you know, as a board and what the public should be looking at, and your confidence on each, particularly as we are in this interim stage and moving forward with Mary Skipper in the future, and you're involved with her on this, et cetera. So a little bit more of the 10,000-foot viewpoint, if you don't mind, Dr. Edgelson.
I think it's a really expert sort of analysis of what is happening here, right? So this is a three-year systemic improvement plan. Many of you know I love the BPS. I grew up educationally in this organization as a school leader and a system-level leader, and as much pride as I have that I work for the BPS, I also know in very real ways that the BPS has not delivered in ways that it should. So for me, the agreement that we have with DESI is sure about hitting these benchmarks in August 15 and beyond. That's very important for our students and families. More importantly, we have significant work to do to change the way we do business in BPS. That is really the spirit of this agreement, and I think to your point, that is going to take more than by August 15 for us to change the way we have done business in BPS for a very long time. And so what I am trying my best to do, my focus has been on a number of really key things from my perspective. One, I want to ensure summer school goes off as strong as possible. I want to make sure that we have a great first day of school. I want to make sure that I'm supporting the transition of incoming superintendent. And then, just as importantly, I want to make sure that I'm laying the foundation in collaboration with central office leaders, with this governance team, with our school leaders for fundamental change across the central office. We have for too long been siloed as an organization in ways that don't communicate between and among different functions, and so it's really important to Monica Hogan and me that we build in a diverse group of system-level leaders coming together cross-functionally to be working through this report and specifically to take action in the areas in which BPS needs to improve. The proof ultimately will be in whether or not in the months to come, we will hit the August 15 deadline. I'm confident of that, of where we are organizationally, and probably some of the ones in early September with great ease. The real test of where we are is as we get into October, November, through the winter and beyond, whether or not BPS is actually pivoting its practices to be a more collaborative, cross-functional organization that our system requires in order for us to deliver on the promise of that systemic improvement plan to our students and families, who are ultimately the people who I feel accountable to, even less than the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is clearly something we have to do. So a lot of work to do. I'm confident of where we are relative to some of the early expectations, and I find promising some of the ways that we're working together in new ways, and we'll continue to do that over the summer as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Edgelson, and as I think about, as you go out, and you know, one of the requirements is go out and get a study on this, get a study on that, and sometimes consultants and other groups tend to come back with a laundry list of recommendations. This is about surgical improvements to our district, and thank you for pointing that out, and so making sure they are focused on, you know, what are the five things that need to be done? What are the 10 things that need to be done? Not trying to fill out a report with 60 recommendations, but you know, what is critical and making sure the district is willing to implement that. And lastly, particularly on transportation, as you pointed out, you know, we started where we now have a contract, which we did not have last year at this time. Could you just talk for a second, please, about some of the changes that that contract is really going to allow us to make of why you are confident that, you know, transportation is poised for improvements?
Yeah, one of my favorite parts of my day is that every morning, normally, I get an opportunity to meet with Dell, who is our Director of Transportation. I believe she's on this call, so I'm going to ask her to just walk the public through some of the improvements that this contract makes to address very explicitly the systemic issues we've had in transportation. If I have anything else to add after she's done, I certainly will do that, but she is far more expert in this area than I am, so I'll turn this over to Dell.
I am going to share a few things that we did not have in the contract historically that we got through this round of contract negotiations with the Bus Driver Union. One would be mandatory, drivers completing mandatory dry runs prior to start of school. So after the driver's bid, the drivers have their assigned runs, and they go out, it's mandatory after the bid. So prior to school startup, they go out and do their dry runs. Another bucket would be how we do the standby bid in the morning and how we assign standby runs. In the contract before the standbys, once the standby, one standby is bid on their run, if the assigned driver walks in and the standby already completed their circle check, the assigned driver can bump that standby driver to take over the run. What happens then is now we have runs that are running about 40 minutes late because there's like a 20-minute circle check that needs to happen, and the newly assigned, when the assigned driver comes in, that driver would start performing a circle check all over again to sign off the bus. Another issue that we've had historically is leaves. Our drivers have been able to go out on pretty like long-term leaves, and their leaves were very open-ended with no caps at all. Unexcused absences was a thing. They can retro, drivers can, would, in the past, could also retro their PTO to an unexcused absence, so if they don't show up for four days, they can walk in and it's like, I'm going to use my PTO for those days, and we would just have to, like, there's nothing that we can do like contract-wise. So that's another thing, I think, where we felt, so getting all those changed in the current contract, I think it's going to help with more successfully managing the workforce and also better outcomes for students in terms of like having more drivers on staff, also holding drivers accountable, just for some of the basic things that we've shown up for work, I should say. On another piece where there are current issues is driver hiring. We fell really short last year with some different buckets. There are some data issues at the beginning of the school year. Also, the driver shortage coupled with that caused a lot of significant issues. We're currently, we currently are running like a big recruitment effort for drivers. Right now, we have 274 applicants, and we're interviewing every day, something that we've never had before that we've established is a CDL training program, and we're training bus monitors and other folks that are coming off the street and are interested in becoming bus drivers are going through training programs to become bus drivers, and this is something that the district has never, or any of our contractors have ever had before. We're offering sign-on bonuses, employee referral bonuses for hiring, so we're currently getting a lot of traction and is really doubling down. We have over five employees that's dedicated to, on the Transdev end, that's dedicated to interviewing and processing driver hiring and our safety team. Another thing that we've never had before is a CD, sorry, a school bus certification. Transdev now, all of their safety, their safety team is trained to do the school bus certification, so that's something that we are currently doing in-house right now. So there's a lot of like new things happening on the ground to ensure that not only that we're covered, but we're improving services for students across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blanco Garcia.
I think Brando Calde Hernandez first of me.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, sorry. Mr. Carden Hernandez. Her picture jumped over to the first place, and that's where I look at, so anyway.
It's a good picture.
It's a good picture. It should jump from. Thank you. And then you can go. One, thank you, Dr. Eccleston, for the update. And, you know, I can imagine, two, it is a difficult time to pull all of this together. Also with summer schedules and getting out and, and just what the system has been through over the last few years. So I just want to recognize that and, you know, we're all thankful that you're there, leading the team. I'm going to, I'll ask some questions about the MOU in a second, but I'm just curious. You mentioned hiring bonuses used in previous years for transportation. You also mentioned vacancies in other key areas. Are we using hiring bonuses in those areas? And, you know, there's other districts across the country also have used Esther funds for hiring bonuses. This is a strategy we're trying to, to deploy.
We have not been using that strategy of hiring bonuses for hard-to-staff areas. Certainly, it's something we could talk about as a team, would likely require collaboration and partnership with our teachers' union and other unions in order to do that. But certainly can bring this back to the OHC team. And they may, Megan Reed, I know, is on this call. She may have some background information around either analysis they've done on this issue or anything else to add. Feel free, Megan, to, to add that detail, but I'm not aware of it at this specific moment in time, but would be eager to talk to the team about it.
And just one thing for clarification. The hiring bonuses on the transportation side for bus drivers, just quick differentiation, the drivers are employees of the contractor, they're not BPS employees, so it kind of just like works a lot different.
This is Megan Reed. I would just second what Dr. Eccleston said. We, at this current moment, are not using hiring bonuses for our hiring of staff.
I can imagine, I'm just saying, it's something I hope we, we explore. Because, you know, you, you go on Indeed right now and you look around, particularly for nursing positions, and folks are getting $10,000 to, to sign on. And so hopefully, we can take a, and a creative, aggressive approach and partnership with our, our labor partners, obviously, to think about what's the most important thing, which is getting those positions filled and meeting the moment, right? Which is that folks are, many folks are anticipating those bonuses as part of the recruitment process. And so if we're going to compete, we've got to offer them. I have another question, just around any further insight we have around the external auditor. And this was a question I asked in previous week. So sort of what do we know and, and what are we still waiting to find out?
The internal auditor position, which I, I think we've talked about it last week, but just to sort of clarify for everyone, as part of the agreement by August 15th, DESI's commitment is to post for an internal auditor. That internal auditor was positioned, or request for vendor RFP was posted yesterday. I had a chance to review it. The deputy commissioner called me to, to let me know that that would be posted. I had a chance to review it and have a discussion around some follow-up. And there's some questions that I have internally with our legal team that I've posed to the deputy commissioner that I sort of want to hear more about. And it seems like they have a, sort of probably about a month process for sort of accepting proposals, interviewing potential candidates or teams of candidates who will then be assigned to BPS to work on the internal auditing project. And I'll, I'll be eager to update the community on that process as part of the August 10th update on this matter.
Perfect. And maybe my last question here, actually, I think I have two more. One is, it's exciting to hear that you've identified, you're starting to identify the, the team of folks who are working with you in this work. You know, for me, it's sort of the first flag that comes to mind. And this has nothing to do with like personnel, specifically just structure. I'm curious, as you're, you know, so many of the concerns raised in the MOU, at least as I understood it, was around data and accountability. And so as we shift leadership from that department into oversight of this role, what's the sort of plan to backfill that structure internally? So, you know, one to like, you know, accelerate data clarity, but also sort of the confidence, right? If we're seeing that big leadership shift.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great and important question. Just a, a few sort of things I think we have to think about organizationally is that the concern not, isn't necessarily sort of our data reporting or the actual data itself. It's just sort of the process we go through sometimes is not necessarily followed, it's sort of protocols. And so there's, there's a lot of work that we need to do to make sure that the data entry is done significantly well. And so that's, that's the part that we need to interrogate as an organization in the weeks and months to come, as we, as we move through the type of systemic improvement that's necessary. I'm very excited that April Clarkson, who is a long-serving BPS employee, who has deep knowledge in this area, will be leading the department, at least in the interim, and certainly will be up to superintendent Skipper around the direction she wants to go. I have certainly communicated this idea and this plan to incoming superintendent Skipper and expressed to her my, my great confidence in April's leadership to lead the department, at least in the short term and potentially into the future.
Is there a plan to grow that team any further? Or either backfilling any of those roles or sort of, how do we think about that?
There is a plan to backfill some of those roles. Some of them will be posted in the days to come. And other reconfigurations we need to make as we move forward. But the, the plan is to ensure that that department is fully staffed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blanco Garcia.
Gracias, Madam Chair. Y gracias, Eccleston, por su reporte. Yo tengo tres puntos. I think Gabriela.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you also, Mr. Eccleston, for your report.
Hay varias cosas que me preocupan en este proceso de transición. Y sé que muchas de las decisiones que se van a tomar, que se van a tomar para que estén en el plan estratégico el 15 de agosto, van a repercutir para lo que va a ser el desenvolvimiento de la nueva superintendente.
Many things concern me right now, and I think that a lot of decisions are going to take place in the work of the new superintendent.
Por ejemplo, los aprendiz, los, la educa, los estudiantes de educación especial y los aprendices del idioma inglés. Es, es algo que no puede ya posponerse. Tenemos que tener un plan medible y sostenible para, para ellos.
So, for instance, the students with special needs and the English learners need a plan ASAP or something that is medable and doable.
Entonces, para el 15 de agosto, ¿verdad? Entendí que vamos a estar presentando el plan. Entonces, es bien importante tomar en cuenta el grupo que trabaja con los aprendices del idioma inglés, porque este grupo ha estado haciendo un trabajo magnífico y ha estado empujando mucho con ideas fabulosas para que los aprendices del idioma inglés tengan una, un verdadero plan.
So I understand that in August 15th, we're going to be presenting the plan. And we have to keep in mind this group that is working with the English learners because they have been doing such a wonderful job. And we really need to keep that into account for the plan.
En ese sentido, quiero recomendar ampliamente la sugerencia de este grupo para que se ha tomado en cuenta, dado que el 15 de agosto vamos a incluirlo en el plan estratégico, viene una nueva superintendente y todo alinea que va a llevarse del plan. Entonces, bien importante lo que el interino, el, el superintendente interino, las decisiones que toma el superintendente interino y su equipo va a marcar lo que va a ser el nuevo plan estratégico. Por eso es importante.
So it's very important because this is going to mark a really big, this, it's, these decisions are going to make a really big difference with the new interim superintendent and its team and his, and their team, I apologize. And in that sense, I recommend that this group makes this work widely.
Entonces, mi primera pregunta, en ese sentido, hemos ya elaborado un plan con el grupo de plan estratégico de, 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 de los aprendices del idioma inglés? Para, para esto, tenemos ya una coordinación con ellos para escucharlos? Me gustaría que.
Is there already a plan, a strategic plan within this group with, to work with the English learners? That's my first question.
Let me, let me just share a few things relative to this question. Thank you, one, for the clarity and, and advocacy. I agree with your premise that we need to act with great level of urgency around strategic plans for our multilingual learners with and without disabilities and our students with disabilities. That is the most critical work before us in Boston Public Schools. We have been working over the course of this year with our English learner task force, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and other key stakeholders on strategic plans for both the Office of English Learners as well as the Office of Special Education. Those, those specific plans have really clear strategic priorities and initiatives attached to them. And as it relates to our work for multilingual learners, it's required as part of the agreement that we have drafted a plan for us to engage in community discussion with, which has already happened with our task force, our English learner task force, with the Department of Justice, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We need to complete that by August 15th. And I can assure this community that this document will be done well before that, will be translated and be ready for feedback from those groups. The systemic improvement plan also expects that between August 15th, and I believe it's October 11th, maybe it's 12, but somewhere in that early October range, no later than that date, the district is required to put that on the agenda, put the strategic plan for multilingual learners on the agenda. And it would be my expectation, my recommendation to incoming superintendent Skipper, that that document be voted as a policy document by this governance team to illustrate its, its support, assuming it has your support, around really important shifts. For example, the strategic plan for multilingual learners will explicitly lay out our district plan for pivoting toward an approach toward native language instruction across BPS. The research is very solid and clear about why that is a good education model. And I think the community will see with great specificity the, the financial and strategic commitment that this district has to make that happen. So the idea is that by, by August 15th, the plan for multilingual learners is drafted and sometime no later than around October 12th, that it is presented for your approval as a body with the caveat that it has gone through an engagement process throughout that time. As it relates to the Office of Special Education, where we have significant work to do around transforming the practices of that office. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has asked us to engage in a contract with a vendor who can come in here and take a really focused look at what's currently happening in terms of our district practices. We are required, I believe it's by mid-November, to bring forward to the school committee the recommendations of that audit or that review, as well as materials associated with the district strategic plan. So similarly, there will be an opportunity for stakeholders such as our SPED PAC and other, other sort of governing groups and other advocacy groups to weigh in on both the, the process through the audit, but also to weigh in on the strategic priorities and initiatives that will be outlined in our plan for students with disabilities and our plan for multilingual learners with disabilities. And those will be presented to the school committee in November. I don't remember the exact date right now. And be voted on for, for your action in the coming months.
Okay. Thank, gracias. I can wait, no puedo, I can wait el 12 de octubre porque yo necesito ver ese plan estratégico. Tengo una comunidad que está en pendiente que quiere ver esto por fin. Entonces estoy ansiosa, I can wait. Mi segunda pregunta bien rápido es sobre las facilidades, señores, Gabriela.
Permíteme, Rafa, tengo que decirle lo primero que dijiste. I, I can't wait for that strategic plan on October 12th because I have so many people who are waiting to know and I'm also very anxious about it. And now I'm going to go with my second question. Thank you.
Okay. Es sobre las facilidades. Tuvimos un año académico completo donde familias, padres, organizaciones venían a nuestras reuniones del comité preguntándonos por las facilidades, los baños, las condiciones de los baños, la calidad del aire, los filtros adecuados para nuestra escuela.
Okay, we had a, we had a full academic school year and the parents were coming to the meetings asking about the installations, about the bathrooms, about the air conditioning, about many things in the installations.
Vi en una de, de los slides que presentó el señor Eccleston que hablaba de que iban a hacer una revisión en todas las escuelas de los baños y las facilidades.
I saw in one of the slides that Mr. Eccleston shared that they're gonna do something about the bathrooms in the installations.
Entonces, me preocupa mucho que ya las clases, la, la, la apertura del año escolar nuevo está a la vuelta de la esquina.
I'm very concerned because the new school year is about to start.
Entonces, tenemos un tiempo ahora de vacaciones. ¿Cuáles son las escuelas?, es mi pregunta. ¿Cuáles son las escuelas que ya se han hecho, que necesitan revisión urgente? Que necesitan reparación de los baños urgente? Que necesitan buena ventilación urgente, filtros adecuados? ¿Cuál es la lista de las escuelas que ya se está trabajando en eso ahora? Para que el próximo año académico se pueda haber reflejado esto.
So I want to know if there is a list already of the schools that need urgent repairs in the bathrooms, AC, filters that are already under plan for repairs before the beginning of the new school year?
The short answer is yes. The, the Boston Public Schools has generated a list in which bathroom renovations are necessary at specific schools. Under the leadership of Chief Operating Officer Indy Alvarez and Director of Facilities, Brian Ford, they have done a remarkable job systematizing that work. So we have a very clear outline of what schools need renovated bathrooms in a strategic and thoughtful plan using the Opportunity Index and the RAP tool, or the Racial Equity Planning Tool, to identify where the priorities need to be in a really systemic way. At our August 10th update, I can include multiple slides around some of the other areas you're identifying around, which are very important around air conditioning and other installations that, that need to be, that need to be part of our major facilities planning work. I don't have all those answers in front of me today, but I have great confidence based on the sort of expectations that we have outlined in the systemic improvement plan that under Chief Alvarez and Director Ford's leadership, we are in a much better place relative to bathrooms.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez, do you have another question?
I do, but my son is walking in, so I'm going to let someone go before me. You can send it to someone first and then I'll go after them. Apologies.
Does anyone else have, okay, Dr. Hawkins, I'll go to you.
Yes, so this is, this is definitely like a different question, but because we're thinking about the, the updates to the MOU, but just making sure that we're on top of things from the previous year. Has there been any status in terms of the, I guess, the, the internal sort of investigation? I guess, the internal sort of investigation at the central office, particularly regarding like Mission Hill, things like that, that we should also just be mindful of as we move into the new year?
Yeah, let me just say a few words about where we are on that. A draft version of Phase Two, which is looking at the actions of individual school actors, has been submitted to me from Hinckley Allen. I am currently reviewing that document in collaboration with our Office of Labor Relations as well as our Office of Legal Advisor, and will be making any decisions that I need to as the acting superintendent relative to that. I will say that that report will remain privileged. It is organized around the specific actions of employees, which would obviously be woefully inappropriate for us to sort of share publicly. But I am committed to taking action that's commensurate with the findings from Phase Two. Phase Three of the report, which is currently underway, is looking at the actions of central office leaders. Former superintendents are being interviewed and spoken to, former chief of staff, heads of HR, etc., as part of this process. Similarly, we will not be making public any findings relative to the performance of central office leaders or any action that might be taken as a result of this. We will, however, make public in full transparency the section of Phase Three that is going to look at the systemic failures that led to the situation that we have publicly discussed relative to Mission Hill. As a result of just trying to get to these interviews, these investigations, Hinckley Allen is looking at somewhere between mid to late July, and that's later than what we promised. We probably overcommitted based on feedback that we got from Hinckley Allen about how long this would take. I don't think, I think that this has become obviously a far more complex investigation than we had originally realized when we first leveraged Hinckley Allen when I started and when I first weeks on the job in July. But we are moving toward the end of the investigation. I'm moving forward and implementing Phase Two recommendations on a case-by-case basis, and will be making public both transparently on our website, the findings that are appropriate from Phase Three, as well as reporting on that in the weeks and months to come.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez, back to you.
I apologize for that earlier. It's good to hear continued clarity around the timeline on Mission Hill, obviously, and the findings more specifically around Central. And, you know, I think I speak for everyone, or at least I'll definitely speak for myself and say, I think people want answers faster, and I know you can't push them any faster. Like, that's the part of an external, an external body doing the investigation. But I know that this body will continue to ask every single school committee where we are until we have an update on where this lands and what we're gonna learn and what we'll restructure from a central level as a result of it. My question, though, different, and I just appreciate Dr. Alkins also for raising it this week. My question is about the MOU and Special Education specifically. If I'm understanding things correctly, right, like we're talking about, if I understand, right, like there's a sort of audit of district practices, and you were talking about this as part of the sort of broader recommendations that would come forward to the school committee. So I guess I'm curious, like, is there a selection process that is taking place? Who's responsible for that work? And I guess I can ask questions after that, but I'm just sort of, I think more clarity around what that's gonna look like and then sort of what's to come.
And the question is specifically around an RFP process to select a vendor to do that audit, is that what you're asking? I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I guess so, like unless we are, you know, pulling someone off of an existing RFP or work that had already started, or just, you know, what's the process and what is it gonna look like and when do we expect it to launch in preparation for what I believe you said was an October report?
Yep. It's October 12th for multilingual learners and mid-November, I believe, for Office of Special Education. I believe Monica Hogan is on the call. She can walk us through the procurement process we're going through to secure the vendors for the August 15 deadline. And then I can answer any follow-up questions you might have, but I'll have her, she knows this far more in a more detailed way than I do.
Thanks, Dr. Eckerson. We have solicited quotes and proposals from multiple vendors and are in the process of getting those proposals back. Procurement processes sort of state that we take the lowest fully responsive proposal that we get back. And so we're anticipating proposals to be returned to us by tomorrow so that way we can initiate the contract processes and make sure that they are in place by August 15th. So we'll be doing three separate contracts, one for Special Education, one for student safety, and one for transportation.
That's helpful. So by next week sometime, or the week after at the latest, we'll know who has been selected for that audit. And hopefully that at the next school committee, we can walk through that as well as, you know, any of their track record around significant transformation or sort of work in this area. That would be helpful. That's my last question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I just have one. We didn't talk about the issues around COVID. I've been hearing in the news that people are concerned that there may be a resurgence in the fall. What are we doing with summer school and how are we planning for the fall? And are we doing any special outreach to our early childhood families now that those children are able to be vaccinated as well?
Yeah, I've had multiple meetings with Dr. Oju Kuti, who leads the Boston Public Health Commission, both around the city and what will be the district's support for vaccination clinics around the city and at our BPS sites. And we have a meeting upcoming, I believe, on Friday. It's sometime this week before Dr. Oju Kuti goes on vacation with incoming superintendent skipper so that we can go through what the recommendations are from the Boston Public Health Commission relative, continuing through summer, and most particularly and most concerning as we enter into the fall. I don't want there to be any surprises for the incoming superintendent and want to make sure that we do everything we need to from a systemic perspective to ensure that we put in the conditions to have a safe entry into school. And so I'll be ready to update the committee about this after some really important upcoming meetings in the weeks to come with the team at Boston Public Health Commission, and we'll be able to share details around what our readiness looks like for the fall. It certainly will be an important part of those updates.
Thank you. Also, in passing, I think you mentioned in your reports, just as a sidebar, something about the reorganization of schools into communities or whatever. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. And this is a sort of a shared belief that both incoming superintendent skipper and I sort of hold about what needs to be true for our schools. I think there have been a number of different challenges relative to some of the types of improvement BPS needs to make. Our central office has been organized into silos, as I mentioned before, and there isn't the type of cross-functionality and collaboration that is truly required to drive dramatic improvements across the Boston Public Schools. I think also there has not been an orientation, both on an academic and operational perspective in the way that there needs to be, around understanding that in large part, as central office leaders, our job has to be in service to schools. That is an orientation that I think that both the incoming superintendent and I share that is critically important. As I've sort of entered into the district and saw the remarkable work of our school superintendents who lead portfolios of schools, all too often I found, and I've previously done that job in the Boston Public Schools, I found that they do not always have the support that they need to leverage on their respective teams. And so from both an academic and in some ways operational perspective, what we've been talking about and started to organize around is embedding key district supports into the region network. So if I'm someone who works in the Office of Special Education, for example, I might be an assistant director. My job would be to support a network or a region of schools that is led by a specific school superintendent. So I'm elevating concerns not only to my department head as the assistant superintendent of Office of Special Education, but also directly to the school superintendent who is ultimately responsible for supervising that work. They are going out to the schools within the context of that region and that network, and we've organized ourselves around geographic sort of neighborhoods that make sense so we can look for patterns and trends across neighborhoods and respond to the customized needs of schools by neighborhoods. And so that structure is something that is very important to the incoming superintendent. It's also an area that I sort of share around school support, and we're organizing a number of critical investments, both new investments and current investments into the regional structure to make sure the school superintendents and the school leaders they serve have the supports that they need from central office in those respective critical areas.
So how many regions will we now have?
There will be nine regions, six K to eight regions, and three high school regions.
Okay. And at some point, will you be able to share that list with us so that we just have a sense about how the organization is happening?
Yeah, I apologize, I should have done that already. That list has been shared with our school leaders and our central office, and I will make sure that either later this evening or tomorrow that that gets shared.
All righty, thank you. Are there any more questions? Okay, if there's no further discussion, I will now entertain a motion to receive the acting superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We had planned to deviate from our usual practice tonight by presenting a report and an action on New Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA memberships for a group of BPS schools, recognizing that this is a time-sensitive issue which impacts the upcoming school year. However, the committee now plans to add two meetings in August to receive DESI updates and plan for school reopening. Therefore, a vote on the MIA membership this evening is no longer necessary. I'd like to propose that we move the MIAA presentation to later this evening when the committee typically hears reports and take action on the request at our next meeting in early August. Is there any discussion? No.
Hearing none, we'll now move on to general public comment. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have eight speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I remind you, we have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Marv Neal, Ketsi Caraballo, Marisol Roach, John Mudd, and Sharon Hinton. If you could all please raise your hands virtually. And I want to note that we did have earlier this week 17 speakers from Up Academy who were supportive of the UP charter renewal, and they graciously agreed to consolidate their speakers to three. So lots of support for UP tonight, and we appreciate that. We'll begin with Marv Neal. Is Marv with us? It looks like he just stepped out of the meeting. Hopefully he'll come back. Let's try Ketsi Caraballo.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ketsi, could you please turn on your camera for us?
I am. Good afternoon. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Ketsi Caraballo. I am a parent going on 23 years of BPS. At the moment, I have one graduate this year and still one attending at Up Academy Dorchester. I love the privilege and opportunity to express my feelings on advocating for the school. Like I said, they've been very well with the children, also given me the opportunity as even and career day to promote to the kids, to further the education, but furthermore, the location. Having the children also receiving IEP services is a plus. The child that just graduated this year is also attending one of the three exam schools. So I, again, love the privilege that I'm here to be able to express my feelings on speaking about the school committee and just saying, can, you know, begging if it was okay to, if we can keep it open for, you know, all the future kids coming down the line that are in the Dorchester area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marisol Roach.
Hold on, I think at the moment she's having also trouble with her video.
Marisol, will you please accept the prompt?
Hi, Marisol Roach. And I enjoyed my experience at Up Academy Dorchester. And I liked how they had a, I'm sorry. I'm Marisol Roach, and I enjoyed my experience at Up Academy Dorchester. I had an excellent supporting system from my... I had an excellent supporting system from my friends and my teachers, and I liked how they was always there for me when I needed them, and I really enjoyed my time. It was always supportive to me, and they pushed me to do more than I thought I could. And, and now I am going to the Orion. And yeah.
That's great, thank you, Marisol. Our next speaker is John Mudd, followed by Sharon Hinton, Bethlehem Giddy, Solika Soto, and Mike Heishman. If you could all please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Mudd? Okay, I'm not seeing Mr. Mudd. Hopefully he'll be able to rejoin. Let's try Sharon Hinton. Mr. Mudd is with us. Welcome, Mr. Mudd.
Sorry, I still haven't mastered this. Can you hear me all right and see me?
Loud and clear.
So, my name is John Mudd. I reside in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and I'm a longtime education advocate in Boston. After watching school committee meetings for 30 years, I do have some thoughts about how they could be better organized. I'd like to share some of those suggestions in three major areas for you to consider in your discussion, beginning later tonight and in the future. First, keep a focus on key long-term priorities. Two, analyze the implications of the data presented in reports. And three, hold oversight hearings with a dialogue among committee members, community experts, and advocates, as well as district staff. So first, for years, BPS has stated that its priorities are to eliminate achievement gaps, promote racial and linguistic diversity of teachers, increase inclusion of special education students, and improve education for English learners and English learners with disabilities, with a recent focus on access to native language. Annual reports in these areas are not enough. Your agendas should provide for monitoring progress in each of these areas at least quarterly. Agendas as they are now formed splay out in too many areas and divert time and energy away from these priorities. Second, reports from school district staff are filled, from my point of view, with paralyzing detail on what has happened, but with little or no analysis about the lessons to be learned from that data and the action steps that need to be taken. I would suggest that the committee require that staff reports spend about a third of the time on the data, a third on lessons learned, and a third on recommendations. School committee members would then have a much stronger foundation for questioning and to make more informed policy. Third, the current structure of having public comment with literally no response from committee members is frustrating for all sides. I would suggest that the school committee hold what I would call oversight hearings on priority issues. These oversight hearings could include a report and/or a brief presentation by staff, but should be followed by an extended discussion with a small panel of experts, community representatives, and advocates. This process would better inform the committee and would establish the basis for a working relationship with the community in dealing with the priority issues we all should be facing together. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Next, we'll hear from Sharon Hinton.
Good evening, everyone, in this beautiful summer evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, mother of a BPS graduate, educator of over 40 years, Hyde Park homeowner, community advocate, doctoral student, president, and founder of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated. In the midst of all the congratulations and well wishes for the new superintendent, Mary Skipper, let us not forget about the flawed process which was used to select the new superintendent. This rushed process completed under the duress of DESI was not the transparent and open process promised, despite several zones and meetings targeted towards different demographics soliciting valuable input. Certain candidates who happened to be of color dropped out and limited the opportunity to get a superintendent that better reflected the student population of BPS. There were even members of the Boston School Committee who stated they would not have hired either one of the remaining candidates for their own organization, yet as a team player went along with the majority who chose to rubber stamp the long rumored choice for the mayor. In the pursuit of stability, diversity took a hit. Representation matters. Research shows that black students who have a black teacher by third grade are 40% more likely to graduate high school. Black students who have had at least two teachers are more likely to attend and graduate college, excuse me. Imagine what a black principal or superintendent can do. As some of you squirm in your chairs because I'm talking about race, notice how the conversation about language and gender no longer seemed to exhibit as much discomfort. This dis-ease when it comes to the conversation about race further supports Boston's reputation and portrayal as a racist city, despite statements to the, by elected officials to the contrary. This time and selection process, despite the justifications by those involved, just proves that the more things change, the more they have stayed the same. Do better, Boston, and demand a fully elected school committee that can be a better check and balance on those who would be king or queen. It's not about the individuals, and you, what you and the Boston School Committee have done a yeoman's job, especially during COVID. It's not personal, you guys are great. It's about the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bethlehem Giddy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm a parent of a child that attends the Russell. I would like to state that I disagree with the proposal to merge the Russ, the Russell and the Cap. If you merge the schools, you'll be losing the K zero classrooms. Then where will we put our children? K zero classrooms are so limited within the district. Families should have options to place their children in schools that suit them. Please do not merge the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Solika Soto. Is Solika still with us? Okay, I'm not seeing her. Let's try Mike Heishman.
You could give her another try. The age of Dr. Brenda Casilius is now part of Boston's history. The BPS must be a learning organization. I strongly recommend the school conduct, school committee conduct a final evaluation report of the three years that she was our educational leader. What went well should be built upon. What can we learn from what went poorly? My understanding of your bylaws is that the school committee is responsible for the hiring, evaluation, and firing of the superintendent. It's not the mayor's job. Please inform me if I'm wrong. I don't want to continue to be misinformed or have my testimony misinform others in the community. If I'm correct, both Mayor Walsh's firing of Dr. Chang and Mayor Wu's firing of Dr. Casilius, both without transparent reasons, has undermined your authority, promoted mistrust, and disrupted progress. Both mayors abuse their power and harmed our school system. By a four to three vote, you have selected Mary Skipper to be our new school leader. That's what it looked like. It did not look like Mayor Wu was the engineer behind the scenes, right behind the stage. Am I correct? If so, thank you for doing your job. Confusion about people's roles in an organization leads to dysfunction. Mayor Wu and her chief educational advisor, does she have one? Should be invited to attend these meetings if they wish and publicly communicate their views to you and the community. Months ago, Mr. Cadet Hernandez asked what his role is. The time for uncertainty is now over. If you continue to not know what you're doing, this confusion will continue to permeate throughout the system. The community and Mary Skipper need to know that it's you and not Mayor Wu who is her boss. By the way, please explain the process which led to the selection of Dr. Drew Eccleston as the acting superintendent. Did Chairperson Robinson have the authority to nominate the candidate? This is not an accusation. This is a question. I think it's very important for us to be clear about the rules and responsibilities of individual members, the chair, the school committee at large, and the superintendent schools. It looks like I got 30 extra seconds. I am, I'm totally unprepared to deal with that. Can I save it for a future time? That would be appreciated. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Oh, Mr. Heishman. Thank you, Chair. That concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $13,336,632. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Any questions regarding the grants? Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is it?
Could you try again?
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? My watch wants to participate. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Plonco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
The grant is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item is Horace Mann in District Charter Renewals and Amendment Request. You'll recall that at our June 21st meeting, Superintendent Consilius, joined by school leaders, presented Horace Mann in District Charter Renewal Request for Boston Day and Evening Academy, the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers in Up Academy Dorchester. She also presented two other charter amendment requests for Boston Green Academy, a memorandum of understanding, and an accountability plan. I will now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Are there any questions before we move forward? Alrighty. I want to thank, oh, well, anyway, hearing none, the committee will take four votes, one for each school. I will entertain a motion to approve the Horace Mann in District Charter Renewal for Boston Day and Evening Academy as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Plonco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Horace Mann in District Charter Renewal for the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any question or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Plonco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Horace Mann in District Charter Renewal for the Up Academy Dorchester as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Plonco Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the following Horace Mann in District Charter Amendments for Boston Green Academy Memorandum of Understanding A, covering the period from 21 to 2026, and the Accountability Plan covering the period from 2021 to 2026. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Plonco Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the schools. Good luck for next year. Our first and only report this evening is New Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA Membership for a Group of BPS Schools. I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Sam DePina, to please present his report. First, I'll invite the acting superintendent to offer introductory comments.
Thank you, Chair. Currently, not all Boston Public School students in grades nine to 12 have access to participate in athletics. The purpose of this presentation, and thank you to Dr. DePina for being here this evening, is to signal our intent to submit an application to the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, or MIAA, and we will ask for your action to approve this request at the August 10th special school committee meeting. This is an important action because by submitting an application to MIAA on behalf of all the schools that are not currently members, we will ensure that all BPS students in grades nine to 12 have access to participate in athletics, a key part of a high school experience. A school committee vote is required, is a required part of the process for completing the MIAA membership application. The district's participation in MIAA is an essential component to ensure that our students, most of whom are members of historically marginalized populations, have the opportunity to participate in team sport competition. I'll now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Sam DePina, to please present I'll now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Sam DePina, for this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Eccleston, and thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, and good evening, members of the school committee and public who have joined us this evening. As introduced, Dr. Sam DePina, and I'm also joined here by Avery Esdale, our Senior Director of Athletics. Due to the brevity of the presentation, I'll be going through the presentation, but we'll both be here to answer any questions you may have. Next slide, please. As you may recall, we increased the athletic department budget on this past spring to increase opportunities for athletic expansion and to stabilize the athletic department staffing to support the different operations needs of the department. This is part of the effort to expand our athletic opportunities for our students. As mentioned, we're seeking approval to seek MIAA membership for these eight schools. And the purpose, as discussed, is to ensure that all BPS high schools in the district are members of the MIAA, and we allow student athletes the ability to participate in athletics. And again, the yes vote is part of the MIAA application process, which I'll go over in a second. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background, preparation for the upcoming school year. This past spring, we conducted a review of all of our memberships. And what we discussed was that the remaining eight schools, who are Horace Mann charter schools, pilot schools, alternative schools, or some schools that have recently undergone some changes to their structure. As such, the pilot schools and Horace Mann charter schools previously up until now have either participated in their own league or have requested to be part of the BPS athletic experience. And with the BCLA, McCormick specifically, BCLA is currently a member of the MIAA as a nine-twelve high school. However, with the recent merger with McCormick Middle School to make it a seven-twelve school, we want to update their membership to reflect this change. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates approximately twenty-three sports that we do offer for BPS athletics across the different seasons. I won't go through all of them, but as you can see here, there's a wide variety of opportunities for our students for these eight schools to participate in. Next slide. And as we discussed, there's an application process. It's a six-step process that we have to complete and submit to the MIAA. This process is one of the six steps that are required. This application, this vote's important in this timeliness because we want to get the application to the MIAA Board of Directors meeting that will be held on August seventeenth. And we'd like to, where the process of completing the applications currently, anticipate having them completed by July twenty-seventh, well in advance of the next school committee meeting on August tenth, so that you can see all the materials that we will be submitting. First is a letter of application, a district application fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, a statement that all participating schools adhere to the rules and regulations of MIAA, a copy that this vote has occurred by this body and you're comfortable approving us going forward, and a copy of the brochure describing the programs or studies at each of the schools. And that concludes my presentation this evening, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ready for questions? Are there any questions? Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Is it possible to pull back up the slide that shows the current sports or athletic offerings? And then, just a clarifying question here. For any of the sports that we're not offering, it looks like it's possibly only golf, but I don't know if there are other sports that are, we're not offering other gender offerings for, also possibly football, I'm not sure. Is there a plan to increase access, imagining particularly for girls in those areas, and would this help us in any way?
The short answer is yes, but I'll defer to Mr. Esdale to speak more to it. We do have wide variety of sports where there are cross-gender participation on the sports, and that's been a big push of ours over the most recent years, but I'll defer to Mr. Esdale to speak more on that.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Good evening. Yeah, just in response to your question there, basically, I think our offerings are reflective of what has been requested and what has been popular within the district in time. I think we're always looking and looking to evaluate where we can expand and what opportunities might be there. I think especially when it comes to girls, we're looking not only at the interscholastic level, but I think also how we provide more opportunities at an earlier age, middle school, some exposure at the elementary level, really in an effort to make sure that both our female and male participants come into, into high school with an appetite for the sports, but also with some experience having played the sport. So the menu there that you see really is our offerings across the board. But the sport of golf, the boys play in the fall, the girls play in the spring, in the traditional seasons, you may have schools that choose one or the other. And if the students are participating in the championship, they participate in the championship season. But, you know, those are kind of the pieces that we have available right now.
Thank you.
Ms. LoPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was just sparked for me with one of the comments around adjusting one of the memberships based on the grade configurations. So understanding that most of this really just impacts our ninth through twelfth graders, but knowing that we also did expand some of our high schools to include seventh and eighth graders, starting, well, some of them have already started, but some of them for new, for next year. What does how does sports work for those additional grades in those high school settings for seventh and eighth graders going into those spaces?
Sure. The short answer is that we do have other seven-twelve schools, seven-twelve high schools, six-to-twelve high schools, and they're just part of the overall high school community, and MIAA recognizes that. So for students in that age level, they would try out for the team as normal. We have JV teams and we have varsity teams. Some of the younger players, depending on their athletic ability, obviously, will tend to play the JV sports, but then those that are qualified and able to play varsity, they'll play varsity. So sports will be available for all those grade levels, as long as they're part of the high school.
And what happens if, so one of the benefits of being a part of this is that if your school doesn't have that sport, you would be able to create a a, a, a team with students from different schools. And so, does that also open up to our seventh and eighth graders who are part of six through twelve or seven through twelve school settings?
Yes. So as teams are not able to fill all sports, or there's an interest in a sport that a school doesn't have, we definitely, we call it co-op-ing or cooperative teams, where we merge schools to play with each other, and those opportunities available for every and one in that school.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you for this presentation. And my first question is, how many of our students participate in high school sports or MIAA sports?
It's roughly on a given year, anywhere between probably forty-two and forty-five hundred students, if you're not counting them individually. Just kind of tie everybody up amongst three seasons.
So close to ten percent of our students, and it's, and it's safe to say for, certainly for those students, athletes or athletics are an important part of their education.
Correct.
That's safe to say, and to say that as someone, it was an important part of my education, how I got through school some days. You just mentioned, Mr. DePina, about co-opting, where you have schools where they combine to form a team, either because they don't have enough students themselves, the other, you know, I think of, you know, what is it? Anyway. So that is correct. How many co-op teams do we have? Do we know?
If we don't have the number available, we can get it to you.
Yeah, I have a summary list that I can share with the group. It's, you know, typically the seventeen larger schools that serve as hosts. And then amongst the other twenty-five, and then we'll have, obviously, thirty-three with a successful vote. Those schools would work with those other schools on the sports that they offer to participate.
And MIAA requires separate applications for the co-op programs, right?
Yeah, so, yes, each school, it goes in, I mean, we operate, obviously, as a district, as a collective, but each school is recognized as an individual school within the MIAA.
So to bring up the issue of what happened last year, which was obviously deeply disappointing to many athletes and student athletes, scholar athletes, I should say, and families, and coaches. This isn't about assigning blame. This is about figuring out what went wrong and what institutional steps have we taken to ensure that that never happens again. Because my understanding was it was about the co-op programs, right, that some schools, the additional paperwork was not filed. Therefore, those students that were on a team from another school were not able to participate, and we find out about this, you know, when we're headed to playoffs. And we're obviously deeply disappointed. So again, I'm focused more on what have we learned from it and what steps have we had taken to ensure that that never happens again.
That's a great question, Mr. O'Neil. Thank you for raising that. So this process and what we're doing now also addresses that concern. So going into this upcoming school year, all schools will be registered for MIAA, so that problem won't exist at all. The other things that we put in place as a result of that is we've instituted and communicated with MIAA executive director and his assistant directors that we will be convening a monthly basis meeting with them to talk and review about all BPS issues and matters. MIAA has worked with us and agreed to provide ongoing professional development about the rules and regulations of not only the sports in general, but also how co-op teams work, the regulations around co-ops, what's expected of schools and teams. And we're also increasing our staffing over at the athletic department to make sure we have a closer eye on monitoring the co-ops and monitoring the eligibility requirements as well. We're also implementing in internal Boston Public Schools ERB, which is an eligibility review board, which is similar to what MIAA has on the state level. We're gonna do one internally for BPS and make sure that we have sign-off verification process internally, internal controls. So both coaches, well, all coaches, athletic coordinators in school, heads of schools in Avery's department are signing off on athletic eligibility, both as far as age goes, as well as academic eligibility as well. So those are just some of the few examples of systems that we're putting in place now. And this is part of it to make sure that all schools are registered, that no issues with MIAA membership.
Thank you for that, and it sounds like you've thought through, you know, how to correct that problem so it does not incur again. And, and I can't let this opportunity go by, Mr. Esdale, without asking you, how are you doing on, you know, keeping up on equipment and coaches? And I know transportation was an issue as well this past year for your students. So the other things that surround the ability for our student athletes, scholar athletes, to succeed.
Thanks for checking in on that. We're in a very good spot, I believe, with equipment and uniforms. Those are all in a rotation that's communicated and people are aware of. From a uniform perspective, we're making sure that we're swapping out every four or five years. I think football, we're going five years, but every other sport, a new set of uniforms is being issued every four years. In terms of transportation, it was a tough year. It was a tough year across the board for everybody. Obviously, we felt some of that as well, but we worked through it each day. And I think we're now, obviously, taking measures in line with Dr. Eccleston's lead around preparing for next year. So we're going through kind of the same steps that everyone else is in preparing for a successful start to the, to the year. But outside of that, coaches, I think, our experience here, we're working with them, one, just around making sure that we're starting off on the right foot, communicating effectively and efficiently and consistently with messaging and making sure that lines of communication are open, but also working to support and, you know, look as much as we can to improve and invest and create as high-quality experience that we can athletically. So a number of things have worked, but I think, thanks for asking about those. They are all in very good shape.
Thanks, and hopefully, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. DePina.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, just to add one more thing to what Avery mentioned around the transportation. What we are doing now is we're exploring alternative transportation options and methodologies. We're gonna be drafting, putting out a request for information on, in the event that, you know, our bus drivers can't cover the athletic runs, our ability to put in contracts in place so we can have that service available in the event that the current system can't provide it. We're also exploring what it would mean for us to secure vans and purchase our own vans so that we can maybe have our own teams drive as needed, but there's a lot of discussion and planning that we're doing around that. So we're exploring all those options as well, so I just want to name that as part of the process.
Yeah, I strongly encourage that being considered particularly for our smaller teams. It is common practice, certainly at the college level, for the coaches to drive vans of students to swim meets and so on and so forth. Then, obviously, there's licensing and insurance issues to consider. But I think, and even, you know, I think back to, admittedly, it was a number of years ago, but when I was in Boston Public Schools and a high school athlete, coaches were driving us in vans to, to events, so, to matches. So I, I think we really need to think long and hard about alternatives there, but I thank you both for the work. I can't underestimate how important this is to our student athletes and an important part of their experience. And I'm glad we've learned from what happened and we're working to correct it. And, Mr. Esdale, I look forward to White Stadium work being included in the Green New Deal as well. You and I have walked the grounds there. So it's an important part of our offerings for our students, and would love to see that continue to shine.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Two more questions. Thank you, guys, for this tonight. The first, and it's sort of piggybacking off of Ms. Lopez's question, and maybe this is my own confusion. So there will be seventh and eighth grade students at schools that have a seven-to-twelve grade band who can participate in these sports. But will the teams be open to seventh and eighth grade students outside of those schools, or do you have to be enrolled in a seven-to-twelve? I think that's my first question.
Well, I can jump in and say, I think, just to clarify, we have three arms of the athletics department. We have the interscholastic level that includes the MIAA member schools that compete against other BPS high schools and other high schools across the state. We have a BPS city league with middle school athletic offerings. We do, but we fund a basketball program, a track and field program, that's open to six to eight middle school, middle, middle-level-aged students. And so I think as we breach this transition in going to the K to eight and seven-to-twelve model, we have taken some measures, and I think there's some more work that needs to be done in order to kind of address that seventh and eighth grade gap. The seven, being in a seven-through-twelve school, if you have an extreme situation that allows that seventh grader to play on an interscholastic team, be eligible basically for six years to play, you know, for JV or varsity athletics. But that isn't always the case with, with, you know, every student. So I think we have to look at what are the opportunities that we have available for the seventh and eighth grade students that are now becoming part of these nine-to-twelve communities. This year, we expanded basketball to offer it to all of the seven-to-twelve, six-to-twelve schools that existed, which we hadn't done before as a measure to kind of address the seventh and eighth grade gap. As the schools come on board this year, we're prepared to do the same thing with those schools that are adding seventh and eighth graders as part of their nine-to-twelve communities. But I think also with some of that investment of money, we also need to look at what are the opportunities that we can provide? Um, but I think also, um, with some of that investment of money, we also need to look at, um, what are the opportunities that we can provide? Um, and when, you know, when, uh, do the opportunities fall, um, that are targeted at the, the seven to the eight grade students, because they're, they're just a little bit. Um, obviously, we know, uh, uh, different in terms of their age or their age band. Um, and I think it's important that they have some opportunities to have some experiences, um, with each other, uh, and not that they're all reliant on, uh, the interscholastic model.
Copy. And then my last question is you were mentioning earlier, you know, the, the teams are based on requests, and I'm curious, is there a process that we go through to, um, generate student voice around their interest? And then what sort of triggers the launch of a new team or a new sport into the system based on demand?
Yeah, um, I, 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 I think the, the, our piece from the athletics department and, and I think, um, hearing the student voice at the school, uh, i- is a, a measure and a targeted, um, effort that we're working on, um, as we come into next year. Um, I think there is a lot that we can learn, should learn, and should hear, um, from the students that are participating, um, in athletics. Um, and actually, uh, we need to get to a point probably where we do an annual survey just around interest in athletics, um, which would give us a snapshot of what kids are interested in, um, and, and what, um, we should be looking at, um, offering. I think on our end, when some of those things come up, um, sustainability is a piece that we kind of have to measure and figure out and and then also weigh that in with, uh, capacity and kind of look at what we have and, um, you know, what we're currently committed to and, and how it all fits and plays together. So, um, it's a exercise that, that should happen will happen, um, and I think that would be the, the, the step or the start that would um, trigger really looking at where you add or where you'd look at, um, you know, additions or modifications to the offerings, the, the sport offerings that we currently have.
Yeah, I just will, my plug is like, we should do that, you know, I push for us to do that annually, right? Like, um, it's, you know, sometimes it's easy for us to think we know what young people want, or you just are taking the, the voices of the few who feel safe enough to come forward and share. Um, but if we created a real process, we might be looking differently at the portfolio of offerings. Um, particularly, my thoughts obviously go to, you know, women in sports and thinking about, um, their participation, but also what we bring to the table for them to take part in based on where their interests lie. Um, but I think that goes across the board for all of our students as well. So I hope that's something we can bring in as we, as we, um, keep deepening this work.
That's a great point. Um, and we do it informally, but we just definitely structure it, and that's part of the conference.
I have a question. I know tonight's, um, conversation has been focused on our older students, but I have a question about, so what happens to our younger students? I know within the community, there are, in some communities across the, um, the city, there are opportunities for children as young as three and four to become engaged with soccer and football, pop Warner football, et cetera. What are we doing at the elementary school? Two things, one, to broaden, um, kids' awareness and opportunity at an earlier age to become involved, and what kind of opportunities do we have leading up to the middle school that are, you know, both exposing, um, kids to a wider variety of sports opportunities than they may even be aware exists?
Yeah, v- variety is key. Uh, I, I love that word, uh, because I think it, um, gives, uh, some perspective on different sports that are out there and different, um, opportunities that are available in the city. Um, right now, uh, we're not, uh, I, I guess we're kind of in infancy stage, uh, of the elementary piece. And again, that was, um, some of our targeted, um, athletics investment and, and some of this, um, S R money that we have around, um, providing some opportunity at the elementary level. Um, this spring, uh, we had a chance to work with some elementary school leaders, um, and really talk about, you know, what they're interested in. Um, wh- where the opportunity presented itself, um, how the schools would have to kind of position themselves to take advantage of um, opportunities or deliver, um, some of the pieces, uh, for their schools. Uh, and we really landed on, um, we did a, um, an elementary field day, uh, at White Stadium, uh, in early June, uh, where we had thirteen schools participate, and it really was, um, basically about two and a half hours, but, um, some running events, the long jump, uh, a softball toss. Um, uh, jump rope ex- um, uh, county exhibition, but, um, really, um, just an opportunity, uh, for the kids to get out and, and have some physical activity and compete, uh, and it went over well. We, you know, we provided a T-shirt, we provided a medal, and those were the things that, uh, the school leaders felt were, were kind of important for the kids. Um, on a larger scale, I think that's gonna take some, some time to kind of figure out what we can do and, um, what we have the capacity to do. But I think we also need to, uh, work with our community partners a little bit more strategically. Um, as opportunities come across my desk or people let me know, um, I've now been sharing those with our, um, parent and family liaisons uh, at the schools in an effort to hope that those get out, um, to their communities and, and people are aware of the opportunities that are out there, because I think there are a lot of things going on, but we don't do a great job of communicating all the, the different things that, um, are going on and that are available. Um, so I, I think between, um, working to, to make sure that I think we communicate a little bit more, um, intentionally, uh, around the ideas, and then I think looking at, um, what are some of the opportunities that we might be able to create? Um, the way we left it with the, the elementary and middle school group was really to, to get back together and look at maybe something that we put together seasonally that gives the schools an opportunity to kind of get together, prepare for it, and then have the culminating event. Uh, but that seems to be what's in our wheelhouse in terms of, um, things that we can manage, uh, and, and that aren't, um, you know, too big of an ask for all the parties involved uh, in order to execute and, and, uh, have the students participate.
Madam Chair, I was just, I was briefly, yeah, in fact, just briefly, I've managed to, um, part of the high school redesign work in the moving to this, uh, K six, seven, twelve model um, has given us an opportunity to really look at kind of and do some design thinking on what athletics could look like more differently as we roll into this, um, um, those, those great configurations. So we do have some preliminary, like, kind of proposals that we were ready to present and move forward with, with the additional investment of either S R dollars and/or uh, some monies that were allocated, um, from the city. However, um, just timing wise, in the high school redesign work not being fully complete, has limited us some kind of our full proposal and full ask about how we could do some of these programming. So as you, as we do the high school redesign work, it'll lay into the athletics and it'll lay into both the feeder programs at the elementary levels, middle school levels, as well as high school programming.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I just want to thank you all, and the, um, the committee looks forward to taking action on this request at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the committee would like to use our remaining time together to have a discussion related to the structure and processes of school committee meetings. Um, for two of our members, Ms. Polanco Garcia and Ms. Papera, um, this probably is about the end of your very first year on the, um, committee. And for Dr. Alkins and Mr. Carded Hernandez, you've been with us for about six months. Um, and it's been full, more than we could ever talk about what we've gone through this, this last year. And so as we prepare for a new school year under the leadership of a new superintendent and for all of us, a return to in-person meetings this fall after almost two years, um, I'd like to dedicate some time during our summer meetings agendas to provide members with an opportunity to reflect on and discuss what is working for you and what is not working for you in terms of structure in processes as it relates to school committee meetings. So we did ask for some feedback and some of the third, some of the themes we ha- we've heard are members' desire to have a more organic dialogue. Sufficient time for data and reports, both in advance of the meeting, to allow for adequate preparation as well as at the meetings themselves. Making public comment more meaningful for both the community and the committee. Um, we've considered suggesting revisiting our one hour public comment period early in the meeting, followed by another opportunity to speak later in the meeting, um, per our twenty twelve policy. So that was, I think, one of the original public comment policies way, way back in twenty twelve. Um, so that's something we can also look at. And then finally, using school committee members more strategically. And I'm sure others have thought of others at the same time. So now I just want to open up to the committee for questions and comments. And, um, we're not gonna do this all night. Um, we've had a lot of meetings, um, and would love to have this meeting and sort of, um, let's see what time it is now. It's seven thirty, so hopefully that we can wrap up this discussion somewhere between eight thirty and nine o'clock so that you all get to enjoy a little bit of the summer evening. So, um, with that, um, I just want to open it up for questions and comments. And because we're on Zoom, it'll be, I mean, I think you can just talk out if you want or raise your hand if you're not getting in otherwise, but this is just a moment for us to have, um, a conversation. I don't know if the public realizes that we are not allowed to have group meetings outside of our meeting together here because we are subject to open meeting law. So going off and having a conversation of all seven of us is not something that we can do by law. So this will be an opportunity for us to have as free-flowing a conversation as we can. So I invite whoever would like to begin.
I guess I'll, I'll start, if that's okay. I, one, I appreciate you making space for this, and I think, um, you know, I've, you know, reflecting, I've been here for six months. I have, you know, shared things that I thought were real successes and obviously have shared really publicly things that I, um, have found concerning in our process. I do think interestingly, and this is different than, um, the email I, I had sent to you, but I listened to John Mudd tonight. And I thought, wow, that is a direction we need to investigate as a team. Right? A process that keeps us honest to the goals of the system, those in which we've set out um, as a school committee and also those tied into the MOU, and then also takes into account uh, a, a public process in a way that allows for much deeper engagement. And I thought, um, in addition to, I mean, really in its totality, everything that he said, um, but also sort of leaning into this idea of like having these panel of experts coming to really hold a discussion. Um, you know, most governing bodies like ours do hearings. And, um, it would be interesting for us to think about how we structure that thematically, what, uh, the focus of those would be. And then keeping them on, uh, you know, an annualized calendar so that when we catch ourselves having mission drift, we know that there is a time, uh, so a sort of parking lot where those conversations will live. Um, and, and I think that will help. I also think that will help direct public comment in a way, because we could be thoughtful about, um, helping folks think about the time that they, uh, where it makes sense for them to share concerns, particularly if they trust in us that we're gonna be holding space, um, for deeper conversations around given topics, and then bringing the right folks to the table for there to be a dialogue, um, in response to that. Um, and then, you know, I'll echo also what has been, I'm sure has been, will be said or has been said, um, in communication to you. But there is just a timeliness. We felt it in a meeting a few weeks ago where, you know, we were voting on something that many of us had had just a few hours to see. And, um, and if we didn't get to look at it in those few hours, we weren't even able to vote on it. And even in that process, right, like, we've, we were still able to move forward because of, of the rules. Um, but as a committee, we, we didn't really have a majority. Um, and so building in real accountability to the system around a timeliness of sharing information with us and then holding true to that, like, you know, there are things that are real emergencies, and then there are things that are not real emergencies, and it's just disorganization. Um, and that there are consequences for that as well, and so being able to hold that line, um, when that doesn't happen.
Anybody like to respond? Build on that?
No, I, I particularly agree, um, I think, uh, particularly on the lens of not necessarily having, um, enough or sufficient time to re- sort of review information, and then also giving space to understand that people process information very differently. Some people digest presentations as they come, and some people need time to sit with it for a little bit and pour through it and analyze it, especially if there's pertinent data, and then on top of that, if there's data that you want people to look at with a particular lens. And, you know, somebody who, you know, comes from a different background, like, say, for example, someone who comes from a special education background knows particularly what types of data that we need to, to look at and analyze with more scrutiny versus someone who's coming at it from a different perspective. So the ability to be able to, to get things earlier, um, is part, i- is, is in part there. And then it's just this notion of also of, you know, do you want to do a bunch of different things, okay, or do you want to do, you know, a smaller number of things, but very well? And really give each, uh, issue sort of the, the, the focus that it deserves. Um, and so, um, I think, you know, and I agree, John Mudd's comments, um, certainly speak to the ability to be able to do that. And then plus, it actually models what many of our groups already do. Like, if you attend any of the, the special, um, like, I would say, special interest groups, like, you, what you do see are a lot of quality discussions where they do bring in experts who are able to talk, uh, to very certain issues. Um, so I agree with, I agree with that approach. Um, you know, one thing that is always good. Um, this is more of a, this is just me as a culture thing. I've always, y- you know, even in, I like, in, in my work, I always sort of have a list of priorities that sort of always center how I work with, with, with things. Um, and I saw sort of a model of it, uh, when we went to, um, the, 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 um, I forget what is it, the, the round table with, with our new superintendent, and so she talked about how she kept pictures of students at the center of the table to always remind you of what, what the focus is. And I do, and I do something like that. And I think it would always be good to sort of have our priorities. Somewhere central where we can always visit them, at least in the beginning of discussion, so that we're always reminded of what are the priorities that we've set forth as a group? And what are the things, how do we still have left to accomplish on those particular front with respect to those priorities? So, um, I'll stop there and, you know, we can continue to talk.
W- one of the things I have mentioned previously, just from a logistical point of view, is that, you know, as we think about the wide array of things that come at us as, at, as agendas, oftentimes, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to respond to what is being asked for us to look at. And so the, the goal of both trying to, even if it's right now a three to six month agenda planning period where two things are clear. There is a set of agenda items by virtue of who we are that we must approve or vote on on an annual basis. And so there are those items. And, you know, and, and some of the other logistical work of the district, and then there are the issues around student outcomes, the reason why we're here. And, you know, and of wanting to work with the district to be more disciplined with us if we decide one meeting a month will be more logistical and one meeting will be on student outcomes, looking at the things that we must, um, look at. We, we now have sort of three documents that sort of help us focus on the outcomes that we're looking at. The strategic plan that we're already in, the DESI MOU and the, and the school committee's own goals and guardrails, and many of those things overlap. But, you know, we know because of the DESI MOU that we will be expecting, you know, updates on a regular basis around the issues that are within that, that work. But to be able to have other kinds of conversations. Um, again, we can reference what John Mudd has, has shared with us, and he has shared that with me already in writing, which I will give to Liz so that she can send everybody else those ideas as well. Um, to really think about, you know, the quality of our presentations as much as what their content is and giving us an opportunity both to have really, um, focused conversations with our public around the, the critical issues that are concerning to them as well. So looking at ways that that second meeting of the month can really focus on student outcomes, but that there may be a variety of way in which we have both those updates, but also conversations. Would be something that I would be interested in looking at, but also would want to get clearly from the district in advance just from now until December, what are those critical things that we must look at? And, you know, how can we begin to plot out what a calendar, a responsible calendar looks like? And I see Dr. Eggleston has joined us, so you may want to weigh in here as well.
I apologize, I stepped away for a moment.
That's okay. Oh, I didn't know whether you wanted to say anything particularly around the scheduling of even, you know, what should go on to our calendar. And, you know, and I think our other thing that we're all interested in is how we can get reports that we need to read and digest and think about a minimum of two weeks in advance. Right now, we were, we're supposed to receive things by Friday night of the week before our meetings. And sometimes we are receiving them at that time. And sometimes we are receiving critical materials as late as the afternoon of the meeting itself. So what can we do with the district and with departments to have a more timely completion and delivery of, of materials?
Yeah, I think a few things. One, from a governance perspective, it's unacceptable that the committee is not getting the materials in a time to be able to review the materials, prepare for the meetings, either pose questions in advance or prepare questions in advance. And that is something the district just needs to do far better on. And I'm committed to working with the team. As I know, incoming superintendent Skipper will also be committed to doing. I think, I think there's also a space in which, you know, the materials, if prepared in advance, shared in advance, translated and uploaded on the school committee website in advance. We don't need to go through forty five minutes of a presentation slide by slide, right? We can share the sort of really key robust elements of the presentation, the sort of juicier parts of this that are more in sort of probably of interest to this committee from a governance perspective and allow more two-way dialogue or the, the committee to do more speaking about these presentations rather than hearing, you know, hour-long presentations from the staff. Now, should you all want to go into supplemental materials or to ask questions for, you know, you know, a, a lengthier amount of time, that's sort of within your governance, right? Of course, to do that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to provide at the onset, a really long presentation. So I think that's just some of the sort of discipline that I'm thinking about in terms of organizationally. I also just think about like as a presenter, just more broadly, like what's the story I'm trying to tell here and why is the story important? And so just doing some discipline work internally and to make sure that we're clear on what, why a presentation is coming forward and why is this important to this Boston School Committee? And why is this important? Important to the Boston Public School community and proffering that argument, I think, will be, be really important. In terms of the arc of this, I do think, you know, I think Dusty has done some of that work for us, right? They've outlined a set of key areas in which the district has failed to deliver the type of systemic work that's required. And I think at least temporarily, that should become the, the focus of the core work that we have as a governance team to do better for our students and families and to respond to the really significant areas in which improvement is necessary in, in the coming weeks and months. And that's the work that I'm, that I'm really committed to doing and both ensuring from a governance perspective that we're talking about these issues. Right? That Dusty can't say, and our public can't say, this is an important priority, but it's never on your school committee agenda. That just can't be. And I think I'll sort of be using that at least in the short term as the guide of, of our work moving forward.
I think Ms. Belanco Garcia.
Oh. Okay, Belanco Garcia?
Did you throw your hand up? No.
I didn't think, I didn't see your hand raised.
The only other, I guess I would add this, not to belabor this, but you know, I think while I want to hear from the district, sort of where they think we should focus. I also think like some of this, we know, like we know the strategic improvement priorities. And so if like we set that schedule and then create the accountability there, I think that that is, you know, key. And then, you know, I have said this in private before, but, and part of this is, I think, just that my short tenure here. But, you know, like the level of data and discussion around exam schools that we have had as a body in my short time here with like real precision. It's actually some of the best data-driven presentations I've seen since we've been here. Like we've never had one in my six months around students, special education students. We haven't had one that robust around students who are not native English speakers. And so you know, I just, I think there is also just like a values piece here, which is why it's like memorializing a schedule that really names what we care to talk about. And I agree with you, like it can be six months, but there is like an annualized process of the year that we can create that will show sort of what we really care about. And, you know, that gives us, you know, twelve meetings a year to focus on those systemic improvement areas. And another twelve meetings to focus on, you know, whatever sort of stuff and things come up that are important, like real-time emerging priorities, but are different than sort of the pillars of what we think are worth governing over. And I think you can do both in a very structured way. It just has to be mapped. And then it's public. And I think, you know, to John Mudd's point, I'll just say it again, and then thinking about how to embed in the schedule, these sort of bigger public hearings that allow for more community voice and then discussion with the system and, and community leaders and us being able to, or sorry, the system and the leaders within the, yeah, the, the leaders within the, the central system and the, the leaders within community and parents. And then allowing for us to understand sort of what comes out of those conversations as part of the questions we want also.
Yeah. Right now, within our schedule, we have our regular twice a month schedule. The only other thing that we've done different has been the budget hearings. And we've scheduled an additional three or four mini meetings to focus that. And when we were in person, we were basically traveling around the city for different groups to come together to review the budget. I don't know. I want to go to Mr. O'Neal since he has been our senior member here. What other types of meetings to respond to more public opportunity for conversation with school committee has been done in the past?
So two different ways. Madam Chair, one is meetings with particular groups. Right? Where school committee members encourage meetings with groups and several members attend. And so I can think of three ways. One is meetings with particular groups such as meeting with sped pack, meeting with Citywide Parents Council, that type of thing. Another is superintendents in the past have held listening sessions around the city. Particularly more when they've been newer. I think of Dr. Chang doing it and I think of Dr. Casilla. And, and members of school committees have attended and that allows us to engage much more in dialogue. Also, what kind of Mr. Mudd was talking about. Unfortunately, the rules of our public comment are actually set for school committees. You know, it, it is the way it works across the entire Commonwealth where we don't respond. It's to form our opinion. I think you see many members try in our comments to give voice to what we have heard during public comment. And it certainly informs our decision-making, but the ability to have the exchange is also worthwhile and many of us have attended, as I said, you know, the superintendent doing listening sessions across the district and particularly when, when Mary Skipper starts superintendent elect to designate Skipper starts. You know, if she does a series of those, it'd be helpful for us. Another thing we have talked about in the past, but have not actually implemented effectively is just simply doing coffee hours in various neighborhoods where school committee, you know, two or three school committee members are available. You know, we've certainly doubted Ms. Lepera and I know we did it during the search process, not, not the coffee hours, but we did a number of listening sessions across the city. And in those, we get to be much more interactive as well. So I think people would value the opportunity to be more interactive with school committee members because they, they want to talk. I was having a, I was out for a walk in Charlestown today at lunchtime and ended up at twenty minutes walking along with a member of the community who wanted to talk to me about the search process and their thoughts and where the district was going. Someone who knew the district well and you know, to have the ability to have those exchanges on a, on a regular basis with a wider, wider variety of parents and community advocates and, and teachers and school leaders. I think is of great benefit because one, it allows people to understand more our thought process that how we're arriving at things. But also helps us inform our decision-making. You know, one of the best things I did, I feel when I was, for, for me deciding how I was going to vote in the superintendent search was calling a whole bunch of school leaders and talking as well with parents and some community folks and, and teachers and trying to get their perspective of the decision we had in front of us. So the more informed we are as members, not just by folks who come to public comment, but allowing folks to have more opportunity to interact with us and, and help inform us in our decision-making, the better we serve as a body.
Yeah. Thank you. Other thoughts?
I mean, I've thought about sort of doing, I mean, it's kind of hard to manage, but similar to that sort of office hours, if you will, sort of just opening like a, just a time schedule where, you know, anybody from the, the community can come and talk to me about a concern particularly that they have. And I appreciate the, that, that exchange because it, it allows us to hear concerns, but it also allows us to, them to know us on a more personal level and sort of also know what we're particularly passionate about. And why, and you know, give some insight as to why we even joined or, you know, wanted to apply to be on this body. And you create, especially in a, you know, as we're trying to sort of rebuild like trust, you know, for me, I can say, as someone who's passionate about STEM education and the intersection of STEM education and racial equity, I'm very, I'd be very interested in doing more embedded work within that particular lens. And, and just working with people who are, who are, you know, diverse, like diverse perspectives, but also like-minded and wanting that level of equity and things like that. So I think like we have a, a multitude of, of just, just a great wealth of knowledge on this, on this panel too. And I'd like to see that sort of leveraged in a, in a, in a more strategic way. So I think that's one way that, that, that we could do it.
You know, Ms. Belanco Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yo pienso que las juntas escolares existen para representar la visión y los valores comunitarios.
I think that the school meetings exist to give value to the values.
Las juntas escolares, este comité existe por eso y repito, si nosotros ubraios representamos los valores y la visión comunitaria. Entonces nosotros como miembros, como comité, debemos estar bien pendiente y escuchar todas estas organizaciones que vienen a nosotros.
I want to repeat that this committee meetings are to represent the values of the community and their vision. And we have to be very aware of all of these organizations that come to us.
Esto implica que haya una educación para los, para las familias, para los padres. Que las familias puedan entender qué son las juntas educativas. Qué, qué es una junta escolar que nosotros representamos.
So this implies that we have to educate the parents and the families so they understand what these meetings are about and what we really mean by having this.
Y quienes educan a las familias son las organizaciones comunitarias. Lo que significa que nosotros tenemos que estar trabajando, tomando en cuenta las visiones comunitarias, las visiones de las organizaciones también.
The ones who educate these families and these parents are the community organizations. So that's why we have to be very aware of their work.
Entonces, las familias se presentan y traen comentario público, las organizaciones vienen y traen comentario público. Y ha sido una queja siempre que ellos sienten que no hay respuesta muchas veces. No quiero decir que todas veces, pero muchas veces las familias están preguntando por la respuesta a sus inquietudes y preguntas.
The families come to the, to the meetings and they make public comments and also the organizations do the same thing, but there are a lot of complaints about the answers to their concerns. No, they, they don't think they have answers to their concerns, to what they bring to the table.
Entonces nosotros como comité, si se quiere, nosotros, nosotros somos gobernanza. Funcionamos como si fuéramos tribunal colegiado. Tenemos un superintendente que tiene que ejecutar un plan estratégico junto con su equipo de trabajo. Entonces nosotros estamos para supervisar y vigilar que ellos hagan el trabajo como gobernanza nosotros.
Us as a committee, we are in charge of supervising the work of the superintendent and their team and that we have to, as a governance, we have to make sure this happens.
Entonces, me gustaría cumplir un año, mi primer año, el veintidós de julio de este año en el comité de la escuela pública.
So I would like, in my first year that it's coming on July twenty second with the school committee for the Boston Public Schools.
Yo siento que todavía estoy aprendiendo, estoy en un proceso de aprendizaje por varias razones.
And I feel that I'm in a process of learning for many reasons.
Primero, el, el material que van a, que vamos, que recibimos para las reuniones del comité, cuando los miembros lo reciben, los miembros que hablan inglés lo reciben más rápido. Es evidente, yo tengo que esperar unos días para el proceso de, de traducción.
For instance, the materials that all the members of the committee receive are in English, so they get them a little sooner than I do because I have to wait a day or a couple of days sometimes to get them.
Pero el hecho de estar aquí con ustedes significa que nosotros los hispanohablantes, lo que somos aprendices del idioma inglés, estamos teniendo la oportunidad de poder estar en comité como esto y que nuestras voces sean escuchadas y eso es bueno.
But being here with you, being part of you means that the Spanish-speaking people have a place in their listen to.
Pero me gustaría que nosotros como comité podamos, que estas, esa fuerza, esas familias que son analfabeto en su propio idioma, podamos nosotros llegar, cómo llegar a estas familias, cómo conozcan ese eduque del verdadero papel de un comité escolar.
And I think that's good, but I would like that we use that power to help those families who lack literacy in their own languages sometimes. And we can get to them.
Llegar a las familias, esas familias, que no tienen el acceso que tienen otras familias, que no tienen el acceso a una computadora, que no tienen el acceso a saber ver un email, a contestar un email.
To get access to those families who are not able to have access to a computer or to respond to an email, those families are the ones that we want to get to.
Por eso pienso que nuestras reuniones en, en parte debemos tener, me alegra mucho que ya en otoño vamos a estar en persona, pero tener con, con nuestra nueva superintendente, con el equipo. me alegra mucho que ya en otoño vamos a estar en persona, pero tener con, con nuestra nueva superintendente, con el equipo, poder nosotros empujar, poder llegar a todas esas escuelas, todas esas familias y que podamos nosotros saber de ellos. Porque la manera que nosotros tenemos de saber de ellos es que vengan a nuestras reuniones o por lo menos se puedan comunicar en nuestras reuniones.
And I'm very happy that we're gonna start having our meetings in person in the fall. Because we want to get to this, to, to attract the schools and families and we want to hear from them because that's the only way we can be aware of what's happening and what, what are their, what their concerns are. So that's the way to, to, to have and participate is the way to do it.
Tenemos muchas organizaciones comunitarias en Boston, muchas, que son muy preocupadas por el sistema público educativo. Y estas organizaciones, para mí mayor felicitación porque son organizaciones que siempre están pendientes. Yo creo que nosotros como comité debemos tener un mayor approach, un mayor acercamiento a ellas. Porque recuerden que la junta existe, porque debemos tomar en cuenta la visión comunitaria y también los valores comunitarios.
So I think that many community organizations are very concerned with the development of the education. And that's why we need to be closer to them. We have to work closer with them because we have to take into account the community values.
De cuanto quiero decir, muchas gracias.
That's all I, I want, I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Yeah. No, thank you for that. I think that's, that's very interesting. And I think that will be for one of our next meetings to think about, you know. There are a number of different parent groups. And understanding, you know, the size of them, who they focus on, et cetera, and how we can make sure we are communicating and listening to them is something I think that we really need to work with the engagement department to think about. Because I would agree with you. The more that we can hear directly from parents to, to understand their concerns and to look at what we are or not doing in response is critical, but we need to figure out and organize in an equitable way to do that. So I know we will need some additional assistance to do that, but thank you. We go to Dr. Alkins and then to Ms. Lapera.
Uh, no, I had a question actually for Ms. Polanco Garcia, but Lorena hasn't spoken yet, so.
Okay. All right, all right. We'll go to you Lorena and then you can follow up. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I hope I don't have a coughing fit. So one, I wanted to just appreciate this opportunity. I think it's, it's helpful to hear how other folks are also experiencing this responsibility. And one of the things that I do appreciate about my fellow members is that we all do have different and at times also overlapping interests. But we're also a part of different communities and different networks of folks who experience the city of Boston in
Very differently.
different ways. And so I think that that's a really incredible benefit of this body and its members. And I think one of the pieces, you know, Dr. Alkins was talking about coffee hours or office hours. And my husband often jokes around that I take my daughter to dance classes on Saturday mornings so that I have office hours with all of the other parents and their children. And it's true because these are the folks who are part of our community, these are the folks who are experiencing our schools or who aren't, or, you know, if they're choosing not to experience our schools for whatever reason. So I think it's often a way to gather insights. And one of the things that that has also taught me is there's such an emphasis, whether it's through the media or whether it's through community groups, around what is said at public comment. And while I do believe that there is absolute value there, I also think that at times it's, it can be a different perspective. And sometimes I think it's also a privilege to be able to sit through a meeting, to wait for your two or three minutes. And sometimes in four or five hour long meetings. And that's not something that all of our families and caregivers have the opportunity to do. And so for me, I think it's incredibly important that we figure out, one, ways in which things are, our ears are more accessible to folks and that people don't feel the need that there is just the one place and one opportunity to voice their concerns or, or voice their challenges. I love when people write to us because I can respond. I can email them back. I love sitting at dance and talking to folks because I can share my opinion. I can share my perspective. I can share my limitations, right? Whereas I think that there is just this, there is an overemphasis, right or wrong, on what happens in public comment. And I don't think that it's always really fully representative. And sadly, I think that sometimes it becomes louder voices, loudest voices. And that's, I, I, I question what, how is that equity centered? Because I do know that, as I said at the beginning, our communities experience the city of Boston in different ways. Because of who they are, because of the color of their skin, because of the language they speak, variety of reasons. And so I think that it's important that there are multiple avenues of access to our eyes and ears. And I, I just love hearing from the members on how to think through, how to become more accessible, how to continue to be more accessible, while also recognizing that we're human beings and we have families and we also have limitations on what we can realistically carry out in a day, in a week, in a month, in a year. I've said enough and my brain is foggy, so I'm gonna stop, but just a lot of appreciation for the time, energy and commitment for the folks in this body.
Thank you. Back to you, Dr. Alkins.
Uh, yeah, well, um, you know, Ms. Lapera, as, as always, you, you always say something that, you know, just makes me wanna jump into a, a whole nother side of it because what you said touches upon not having always the proper context for everything in, in, that we sometimes hear. You've also sort of in some ways touched upon what is the ability for, for BPS in, in moments, particularly around public comment, to respond to things and have ample time to, to basically respond to the types of things that we do hear, some of which are things that I think take everybody by surprise when we hear them. And sometimes the notion sort of gets out there that it's not only, it doesn't seem like BPS isn't responsive, but it's almost like we're aloof and we, we don't care about that. And that's absolutely not the case. And then on, you know, you've also, to some extent, that touches into what role does media play into all of that? And the responsibility to paint the picture, you know, you know, Chair Robinson, you said it at, you know, the speech for Dr. Skipper, right? You know, like you have a responsibility in this to also tell the positive stories as well. And so I know we want to enter into this new era and a, and a, you know, with a positive relationship at that, where we're working collaboratively and keeping students and families centered first. So yes, like to all, to all, everything that you said. And I got more issues. But, uh, my, my question was actually for like Ms. Polanco Garcia in that something that I thought very early on was just as we get back to in-person and you talk about access not being particularly from a, from a computer screen. And being in-person, would, do you think that families would appreciate something like a rotating in-person meeting? Where, I don't know, like, you know, we have our office down at Central, you know, at Central Office, but would it work to have a meeting in East Boston and then another, another meeting in Roxbury, Dorchester? And so as a school body, we are moving and seeing the different communities and giving, and sort of meeting people where they don't. I know it's tough. I know it makes it tougher for people, but is that something that would give people more access to us? That's a question.
Gracias. Para mí, si nosotros podemos conseguir rotar las reuniones anteriormente, yo misma participé en algunas de las reuniones que se hicieron en diferentes localidades. Por ejemplo, una reunión que se hizo en la escuela Joseph Quincy.
For me, if that, if we can rotate the meetings, I, I think I would like that. For instance, I participated in some of those rotating meetings, one at the Joseph Quincy School.
Si nosotros podemos lograr rotar las reuniones de esa manera, la población, la población de, de Dorchester, Roseberry y diferente, en diferentes escuelas, nosotros vamos a conseguir poder llegar hacia ellos, hacia las familias, no dejarla estática en un solo lugar.
If we can really get to those rotating meetings, we're gonna be able to reach to the families in Dorchester, Roxbury, et cetera. And that's gonna, we're gonna be able to hear those populations.
Por eso yo me refiero en la alegría de traerla en persona, porque podemos tener un mayor acercamiento con las familias.
And that's what I mean when I talk about happiness of having the meetings in person because we're gonna be, be able to be closer to those families.
Focalizada por localidades escolares.
And it's gonna be localized according to their school zones.
Yeah, the, the, the idea of the new school zones will be something that we will need to think more about. But, you know, I was thinking about the difference between our hosting a meeting somewhere in the community versus being hosted by the community. You know, so whose meeting is it? You know, you know, is it our meeting going to share or are we going to be part of the community's meeting and be a different kind of listening partner? Because I think that's sometimes what we, we try to get into in public comment. The people have a lot they want to share with us with regard to what they are getting or not getting from us versus us coming to tell them what we want to give them. And I think, I know that there's need for both, but I feel like we need more of the hearing from and being invited to participate through commu- communities, to go to meetings that are their meetings, that they are hosting. Sometimes when we have moved our meeting around to different parts in the past, we have not had very much turnout to those meetings. When we've done the budget hearings, sometimes it's more of us than it is unless it's a year and when we're doing cuts and then the room is filled, obviously. But, you know, but how, you know, in, in just general normal times when we really are interested in hearing what is working and what is not working and wanting to be hosted by community, be invited to come to their meetings, to hear and to feel if we can create that into a better dialogue. Thanks. I mean, at our, in next meeting, not for tonight, but one of the things we will be discussing and thinking about is this overall experience of being a school committee meeting member and what does that mean in terms of time commitment? Because all the things we want to do will take time. And I know that the majority of you are full-time working adults plus family members. And this is an extra gig. And the question is, you know, what is both reasonable and possible? You know, to do this job and do it well. I know people have all had concerns about the length of time of our meetings, particularly because we do value public comment and want to make sure that we do hear what public has to say. But it is honestly exhausting to begin the content of the meeting at nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. And then you feel like your, your own energy is waning to be able to focus on the very things that you are here, you know, to focus on. And so that is one of the reasons why the whole idea of going back, taking a look back at the 2012 policy that says the school committee will have two public comment periods. One, one for, you know, an hour prior to the meeting. And then the additional public comment can happen after the, the report. And, you know, that makes for still a very long meeting. And then we will be returning in person. So we don't even, I mean, in that, when those policies were written, there was only an in-person opportunity. There was no Zoom. There was nothing else. So if you wanted to speak, you were there with the committee till ten or eleven o'clock at night to be able to, to talk. So I, I wasn't there then, so I don't know what that felt like. But, you know, it's, again, it's an option. So I think as we, we think about this, it will be important to do this. I need to be excused. My doorbell is ringing. I have a, somebody is delivering something. I'll be right back. So Mr. O'Neil, let me take this for the next few minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see Dr. Alkins has his hand up. No, oh, I'm sorry. You know what it is? It's, it's your background behind you has some yellow right in that corner. It almost looked like a hand raised. I apologize for that. So I'm not sure what additional comments folks have to make. I mean, I know the chair wanted this just to be a discussion. To folks get on the table, what their thought process was. Are there ways we could look to improve how the meetings go? Stay focused on student outcomes as much as possible, even while we have some organizational work, so to speak, that we have to do on a regular basis, such as you know, the renewals of school charters, et cetera, like we voted on earlier tonight. And then how do we maximize the ability to get public comment? Not just from the folks who come to us regularly at these meetings, but make sure we have voices from around the city, including folks that it's not convenient for them to come to sit and wait for an opportunity to speak in public comment. So how do we add the value to that as well? So I think this is an ongoing process. The chair wanted to bring it up particularly because, you know, we have some newer members who are thinking about this. And, but it's clearly ongoing. Chair, I was just kind of explaining, you know, your thought process behind having this conversation.
Yeah.
And that it's an ongoing effort as we seek to improve. We're in a transition phase with an interim superintendent and a new one joining as well. And Dr. Eccleson has been very thoughtful of the how to maximize the ability to really get to issues during school committee members, during school committee meetings. And so it's gonna be an, an ongoing process to take the input, continue to think. And, and Mr. Tran has his hand raised as well. But here, back to you, Chair.
Yeah. Mr. Tran?
Yes, I've been listening. I've been absorbing all the comments and everything that I've said about the process today. Well, in, in fact, throughout my fourth, four years here, serving on this committee, this topic, this issue regarding the arrangement of the public meeting has been a recurring issue for the last four years, sometimes twice a year. What I would say that what we have right now is working, is workable. The only, the only thing that, that had been promised to us. The only, the only thing that, that had been promised to us for a while, but it hasn't been done, was the report issues and materials that we, that we need to receive. I, I'm not asking for two weeks, but at least a week ahead of time, just one week ahead of time. And, and that, that, you know, that, that is my only, uh, assessment. The, the other thing is, a very short thing is regarding the, uh, uh, presentations from staff on different items. I agree with, uh, while I agree with Dr. Eccleston, Eccleston regarding, uh, pinpointing, uh, media issues so that we can discuss, but at the same time, um, I agree with that, but I have, you know, I have some caveat. The thing is, if we do that, are we expecting the public or people who are attending from the, uh, from the public, uh, attending the meeting have read and have reviewed all the documents that are on the website? That is the question that I have. I don't know. I, I have no question to that. So while, while I, I agree that it should, you know, that, 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 that the, the presentation for the, you know, for the sake of time should be condensed specifically. But on the other side of the coin is my concern regarding, you know, the public's access to those documents so that they are well informed as well. And, uh, lastly, I, I, I've read, uh, Mr. Mudd's, um, testimony. And I agree, you know, I agree to some of it. And, um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I would agree. I think that the biggest issue will be, what, what is that balance between, you know, fully going over a report? If the idea is that we get it in advance in that it really is, if the materials are posted really a week in advance, it would give those who are more inclined to prepare for the meeting in addition to ourselves to do that. Um, and, um, you know, I, I think we would have to, you know, try it and see. You know, if there is, you know, if there are more questions about having, you know, more of a dialogue or a better explanation of the, um, of the materials. But, you know, I also like what, what Mr. Mudd proposed in terms of thinking about how the presentations are even, you know, formatted so that we are getting, you know, a third of the, you know, the, the big information, a third of the outcomes of whatever has happened and a third of next steps. So that this is really, this is action oriented. Oftentimes we do get reports where we just were, it's presented, but then the question is, so what's next? Or what happened or anything? And there's really nothing but except the raw data there. So the idea that we would think differently about how actually reports are formatted may make those conversations more productive as well. Um, do you have any thoughts about that, Dr. Eccleston?
I am, I'm sorry. Could you just repeat that last part? I apologize.
No, it was about formatting reports so that a third of the report is really speaking to whatever the issues are. But then another third is talking about what are the outcomes of whatever happened? And then the third would be what are the next steps? So it's really more action oriented and not just a report out.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. I was looking at a press release for tomorrow. Um, I think, um, I think, uh, a few things. One, I think to the testimony from, um, earlier today from Mr. Mudd, I think that that is, um, something we really should be considering and thinking about. I think all too often we are not having governance decisions that focus on the return on investment. What is the evidence and data that suggests what we're doing is working? And that we should continue to do those things? I think that's a really important part of this. I also think, you know, and I've shared this, um, before, both privately and publicly, that BPS has been a really good at vision and not necessarily so good at implementation and execution and really clear about what next steps need to be. But I really appreciate that feedback and it seems to be resonating with members of this committee for us to be thinking through that, um, in the future, to really share what the next steps are, what the public commitments that we will make. And then us holding ourselves accountable for implementing and executing on those next steps, I think will be really critical as we move forward. But it's, it's very clear to me, as someone who loves this organization, that we have to get better at the implementation and execution. That has been our downfall. And, uh, some of the reasons why I think we have some of the systemic, um, areas for improvement across this district.
Great. Okay, so right now we're about eight nineteen. Um, this has been a lot of good food for thought. I'm wondering if there are final thoughts that people have so that we could sort of wind up by eight thirty? Or sooner?
I mean, I would, I would certainly, I mean, I think to some degree, I think we do see a lot of great attempts at this already. Um, I think it's just about normalizing it essentially, um, particularly with presentations. I mean, data without a story behind it doesn't really help a lot of people. But, um, I also think like having a part of the, the presentations also be unanswered questions and what questions are particularly still looming from those people who are closest to the work? Um, because that would also help to know that you all are thinking about it as well. Um, you know, oftentimes it's because of the flow of the conversation. It's almost like us sort of generating those questions. But I know that you all as a particularly like BPS is a definitely an insightful body and that is really thinking about proactively what's the next step. So I'd like to see that in presentations as well. Um, just like what, yeah, like what are the gaps that we still have left to fill? Um, and like I said, some of that comes up already. Um, but I think just normalizing that as a part of presentations, um, will be very helpful for everyone moving forward.
Okay. The last thing I'll say, and I apologize because I also have to run in a minute, but, um, I think it would be interesting, you know, there's a lot here for all of us to think about, but obviously for you to really think about, Chair. And, um, but I do think it would be helpful, and maybe this is for an August meeting or later, but to come back, uh, and share with the public sort of how we're thinking about restructuring and, and hearing some of that feedback from them, um, around the ways that we're going to, you know, shake things up with the recognition, and I think you've said this, Chair, like, we're not going to be able to please everyone and this isn't a full-time job. And so the governance part of this is complex. Um, and this is obviously a team of people who are, are willing to go all in. Um, but there are time constraints and so everything can't be a priority. Um, but there are some like really key pieces, uh, that we can pay attention to. And, and I think, you know, I, I'm saying what everyone said, that framework that we got from John Mudd, but also other thoughts that were, came here today, I think have given us a nice, nice color for us to, to start to play with.
Yeah. And as we move forward, I mean, I'm sure, you know, by the end of August, um, Superintendent Elect, some, Skipper will be able to join us, but also want to sort of organize these thoughts so that we can share with her some of the things that we're interested in considering so that she too can weigh in and we can jointly come up with a plan that works for all of us. So having an opportunity to do some of this and to continue to do this thinking, because, you know, I'm sure in the background between Ms. Sullivan and Annie Quinn, that somebody is writing all of this up for us so that we can both review it ourselves and then begin to sort of, you know, prioritize of all of these things that we've been talking about. What are the things we, we, we feel will work best or we want to try as we move forward? Because obviously we'll have more ideas than we will have time, um, to be able to implement, but want to do the ones that we feel will be most effective. And so I've heard a lot of good thoughts tonight. I mean, critically about, you know, I think the number one thing that's on all of our minds, you know, as we think about our inter- interaction with our community, whether it be in public comment or otherwise, how can we get that this right? How can we get it better so that it feels like we are working together? That people feel that, um, they're not just speaking to a bunch of nodding heads, but that we feel their pain and are anxious as they are to get these things resolved, but want to be able to figure out how we can do this also when it's appropriate in some other kinds of dialogue opportunities. Um, and then to have reports that are meaningful, that provide us with substance in understanding of what will the district do next? We are also about, you know, continuous improvement. So we want to hear where we've been and where we're going as we do this work. Um, and, and critically, there are a number of issues that we are responsible for because of the Desi MOU, but also because they are the most critical things that we need to be looking at overall in our district, how we are educating our ELLs, how we are working with our special needs students and families to make sure they're getting what they need. So we do want to make sure these things are showing up regularly on our agenda so that the public knows that we are taking this seriously and that we are also holding the district, you know, accountable for, you know, moving forward. So I know if, if we just start with those things and begin to look at what is on our calendar that we know we will need to be covered, we've got a good place to begin as we are, um, you know, thinking about putting things onto this agenda. And then as we talk with Superintendent Skipper, we'll also understand, um, her priorities and the way that she wants to move forward in this work too. So unless there are any more issues for tonight, I want to bring this meeting to close even five minutes earlier than I thought, um, to give you back an evening. I mean, this is one of those early evenings for us. We've still been here for three and a half hours. But, um, yeah, you know, hopefully as we move forward into the new year and if we begin to do this work right, um, people will feel heard in ways that they will not have to come for four hours of public comment. Um, and so we really want to be able to, um, to really hone in on these issues um, so that it feels better for and productive for both the public and for ourselves as well. Because I know how much you all have pushed into this work, um, over the last year. And, um, really want to thank you all for, for sticking with it and also working through how we can make it better as we move forward. Um, before we move on to, um, final public comment, want to give anyone final remarks before we move forward? No one? All right, then I will turn this over.
Sure, um, just wanted to share quickly, Chair. Thank you for your vulnerability and modeling. I think for all of us, uh, what constructive sort of feedback and, um, own interrogation of our own practices can look like. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't say, um, even though not here, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, the, 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 the reports that we heard to, earlier today from Dr. Eccleston, I think is also a testament to the great work that he was doing, but also under the leadership of Dr. Casillas. So, uh, to continue to sing her praises for the work that she did, um, in the three years that she was here. And we have a good foundation, I want to say. Um, and so, um, definitely respect to her.
Thank you. That's great. Alrighty, so I will now turn this over to Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, do we have any, um, report, any public comment on reports?
Yes, Chair, we have one speaker for public comment on reports. Suleika Soto.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, hi, good evening. Um, so my name is Suleika Soto. I am a BPS parent and I'm the current acting director for the Boston Education Justice Alliance, and I'm a resident of the South End. Um, so equity is defined as the quality of being fair or impartial and recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. The city of Boston and Boston, and Boston Public Schools must implement an equitable action plan for the coming school year to ensure that students and staff do not suffer further harm. Students, staff, families and communities must be as safe as possible from the continuing and increasing threat of infection from COVID-19 virus. The action plan should include all layers of protection to reduce transmission in our schools, accessible out, opt-out PCR and rapid testing, as well as symptomatic testing, expanded access to up-to-date vaccinations and boosters, good ventilation and filtration, the provision of highly protective masks such as N95s for staff and KF94s for staff and students and other measures. And the city of Boston and the school committee must step up now to address these challenges. Beja asks that you prioritize transparency and parent, student and community engagement, not only as a talking point and checkbox after making a decision that impacts them, such as mergers, school closures, change in grade configurations or new school buildings, but as an asset to ensure equity and rebuilding trust with families. Who will provide oversight and monitor the implementation of strategies, if any, to ensure decisions don't expand, but rather eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps in our school communities? Unfortunately, under the leadership of an appointed school committee, there is no one to hold accountable for the promises that were broken and continue to be. There are Russell parents here. I'm sure there's still Shaw parents that have come here. We are now on the third mayor, third school committee chair and soon to be third superintendent, the same folks in the budget office and in central office. But the one thing that remains the same is the broken promises, the lack of accountability for keeping those promises and school communities continue to be pitted against each other when other, uh, when some get what others only could dream of.
Thirty seconds.
We as parents, students, educators and community members need and have to have a voice in the policy decisions voted on by this school committee. We need to restore trust and accountability and outcomes, and we need an elected school committee. We as Beja support an elected school committee where Boston families can have more of an actual role in selecting someone who we can endorse as a superintendent because our current minimum standard should not be determined by our school communities being able to survive the harm that they do. Thank you. And thank you for having the last conversation. I'm glad you guys are getting into this.
Thanks. Thank you. Chair, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Is there any new business? Okay, well, that can, that concludes our business for this evening. The next remote school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, August 10th at 5:00 PM. And if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cradat Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you and good night, everyone.
Good night, all.